Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 a.m. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. There's also an automatic external defibrillator on the back wall of the legislative chambers. This morning, we have a special guest with us. Please stand as our corrections honor guard, present the colors, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Honor guard, forward, march!
Hi, Mike.
Hi, PJ, how you doing?
Good.
Ready, march!
I'm right now, Dr. Levy.
Present, march! I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, march! Ready, face! Forward, march!
Thank you. I will ask that we begin with the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, and we will do our recognitions at this time. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Commissioner Mike Boyle. He is present.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan.
Present.
Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. At this time, we will move to the recognition and proclamations, and I would ask Director Mike Myers and Tanya Burnside's family to come to the podium, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. Before I begin reading the resolution, I want to speak to her family, and I want to thank them for sharing Tanya with us at Corrections. I do my job differently because of the lessons I've learned from Tanya. I learned that the efforts of diversity and inclusion and equality are not things that you do that are set off to the side as a separate project, but they are principles that need to be woven into everything that we do. And I'm grateful for the time that I got to spend with her because it made me a better person, and it made me a better director.
Mike, before you begin the resolution, I forgot to ask the staff that's here, as well as our honor guard, to please line the aisles as Director Myers reads the resolution.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Whereas, in remembrance of Correctional Officer II, Tanya Burnside, Douglas County recognizes that Tanya was a valued member of the Department of Corrections, having served the citizens of Douglas County for over 15 years. And whereas, Douglas County recognizes that Tanya Burnside contributed to the Department of Corrections in a variety of ways, including as a work release officer and leader of the African-American Correctional Officers Association, known as the AACOA, and was president of the AACOA at the time of her passing. And whereas, Douglas County recognizes Tanya Burnside advanced the profession of corrections well beyond Douglas County by serving as an auditor for the American Correctional Association and was active in the American Jail Association. And whereas, Douglas County recognizes Tanya Burnside was a staunch advocate for fairness and equality, receiving Douglas County's Martin Luther King Jr. Award in 2018. Her wisdom and spirit changed many people for the better. And whereas, Douglas County and the Department of Corrections will be forever changed for the better by Tanya Burnside's actions and will profoundly miss her presence. And whereas, Douglas County and the Department of Corrections extends condolences to Tanya Burnside's family members and friends. And therefore, be it resolved by this Board of Commissioners, we hereby recognize the life and contributions of Correctional Officer II and African-American Correctional Officer Association President, Tanya Burnside, dated this 27th day of April 2001, signed by Board Chair Mary Ann Borgeson.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
There was a motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Any comments from board members? Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the family, to the staff. It's ironic, the first time I really got to talk to Tanya was after she won the award at the MLK Ceremony. Then after that, we began to be in regular contact as she expressed her thoughts on things that could be improved. And particularly as the last year came around, the last time I had a chance to really talk with her, engage with her, it was after the Board did the support of the affirmative action resolution. So to the family, definitely express our sympathies, and to the staff. But I know for sure some of the efforts that the Boards began that were spurred by her and some of the other members of the organization will definitely live on and serve as a motivation for where her heart was in regards to equality and trying to make sure that everybody had that chance. And I'm sure her other aspects of professionalism will live on in the force as they continue to go and remember the standard that she set. So with that, I want to express my condolences and let you know that she served us well, and we appreciate everything that was done.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
So I'm also very sorry for your loss. I never knew her, but just hearing her story, I find that her story is very inspirational. It sounds like she is a role model and a mentor, not just in the correction center, but outside. So she will be sorely missed. We need more women, more Black women. We just need leaders like her that don't follow the traditional path. So I'll miss her, not even knowing her, just knowing what she's accomplished. So again, I'm very sorry for your loss.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Yes, thank you. I really just want to echo the excellent remarks and heartfelt remarks that were made by previous three speakers. I knew her, and I was so impressed with the way she handled herself. She had a responsibility to represent the African-American employees, the Black employees, but you know, she did much more than that. She extended her leadership and her love and her respect for others into the white community, and she became a real leader in the facility, not just for the Black employees, but she set such an example for all the employees. And when I would go there, I would occasionally be able to say hello to her, and I saw the bright smile, and I knew what she was doing. I was very impressed, and she will truly be missed. She was a remarkable, remarkable person. And in these days when we're facing so much racial strife, the examples that she gave in her life are really uplifting. So I will always have pleasant remembrance of Tanya, and I want to thank you, and I will pass on also my sincere condolences upon her death. It's a real loss.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I'd like to express my personal condolences to Tanya's family for this loss. She will be remembered as a hero of our community and someone who sadly lost their lives in this pandemic that we all struggle against. We will remember and honor her name always. We're sad to be here today, but we're proud of the contribution she made to our community. Thank you all.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Mike Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It seems like I'm running into this a lot now, and the older I get, the more difficult it becomes. I didn't know Tanya, but words can't... When Director Myers told me, and he told us, I could tell he was quite distraught, and that, to me, speaks volumes. My condolences, again, I don't have the words. Thank you for being here, and my sympathies. Thank you.
I would also like to add my condolences and kind of echo what Commissioner Rogers was saying. Tanya really started our discussion off about diversity and inclusion and equity. Not only did it spur the conversation within the Department of Corrections, but it spurred this Board to look at it countywide. And so her work will continue to be moved forward from this Board, and we will always remember as we move forward in the work, we will remember Tanya. So again, to the family and all of the coworkers and friends, we're very sorry for the loss of Tanya. At this time, are there any staff members or family members that would like to say anything? Okay.
Just, I want to give an honor to God and to thank all of the officers here, the Board members. Thank you for giving us this time and allowing us to be here. It is a difficult time, but we are grateful that you are honoring her and that you gave us this moment to share with you. Like you said, she was a great person in work, in play, in the family, in everything, and we will miss her. But thank you for allowing her to work with you. Thank you for representing her. And, you know, life, there's death is a part of life, and we have many, many memories to share and to live with. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
On behalf of the AACOA, I don't know how many members are here. I'm a Board Member of the AACOA. I would just implore you all and the Department of Corrections as a whole to take hold of Tanya's legacy and the things that she stood for, and make sure that those things, as Director Myers said, are kind of woven into the fabric of Douglas County as a whole, because those things are needed. They are vitally important, and to recognize the importance of equality and recognize the importance of fairness within the Department and Douglas County as a whole. So I just want her legacy to live on in Douglas County. I really do, and I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if there's no others, again, our condolences from the Board, and we thank all of you for being here. We thank the honor guard for presenting this morning, and you can be assured, her memory will be with us forever, and her work. Thank you. If we could please stand while everyone exits. Oh, yes. We also, we need to vote yet. Thank you. Dan, could you please do the vote?
Yes. Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Okay, there we go. Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Mike Boyle and PJ Morgan voting virtually, all other Commissioners voting in person.
We will go ahead and just finish up these recognition and proclamations while we're at this item. The first one is recognition of the following county employee who's retiring after 17 years of work at the District Court, Janelle Roof, if she's present or anyone in her family. She's not, but we do wish her well. And then we have a resolution recognizing... No, we're going to do that separate. Is Elaine Hansen here? Eileen Hansen here? Okay. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. We'll do the... Let's just do Item A. Is there a motion to approve? Please vote.
Commissioner Mike Boyle? Commissioner Mike Boyle, are you voting yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Mike Boyle and Morgan voting virtually, all other Commissioners in person.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. I think I have my head straight now. Item B is a resolution recognizing Michaela Mickey Knapp for the 50 years of service at the Douglas County Health Center. I will read the resolution for that. I don't know if there's going to be anyone here from the Health Center, but this is quite amazing. Ms. Michaela Mickey Knapp began her longtime career with Douglas County in April of 1971 as a nurse's aide for the Douglas County Hospital, which is now the Douglas County Health Center. And whereas, Ms. Knapp has been a dedicated and committed employee to Douglas County for 50 years because she's compassionate and she truly cares for the well-being of the patients and residents of the Douglas County Health Center. And whereas, it is believed that Ms. Knapp is the longest-serving employee of Douglas County Health Center in its entire history. And whereas, Ms. Knapp said working for Douglas County has been a blessing for her and her three sons and her grandchildren, and she's grateful for all the opportunities and benefits for working in county government. And whereas, Ms. Knapp, who is currently a unit secretary at the Health Center, has a variety of responsibilities, including ordering supplies and filling doctors' orders. While most of her work is now done on computers, she recalls the days where she used a typewriter to complete tasks. And whereas, in all five decades of her career with Douglas County, Ms. Knapp said she has never experienced anything like working through the COVID-19 pandemic, and said she's thankful for the loyal nurses and the entire staff at the Health Center for being resilient during such a challenging time. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby recognizes Michaela Mickey Knapp for 50 years of employment at the Douglas County Health Center and honors her longtime commitment to public service dated this 27th day of April 2021. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Maureen Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Morgan?
Voting yes.
That appears Commissioner Mike Boyle's away for the moment, so motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Morgan voting virtually, all other Commissioners who are voting, doing so in person.
Okay, thank you. The next recognition and proclamation is a resolution honoring the life of Eileen Hansen, a longtime public servant, attorney, and volunteer at the Douglas County Health Center. Ms. Hansen, who had a remarkable career as a public servant and attorney, was passionate about volunteering and giving her time to help others. And whereas, Ms. Hansen provided countless hours of free legal service to residents of Douglas County Health Center for the last 30 years. And whereas, when residents of the Health Center would have trouble finding a guardian, Ms. Hansen would become the guardian. And whereas, Ms. Hansen, who grew up with her parents and two brothers on the family farm north of Hampton, Nebraska, was a graduate of Hampton High School. And whereas, she began her career in Washington, D.C., where she worked for the newly-created Navy Department Bureau of Ships as a typist, tracking specifications for the construction of items for shipboard, use of military ships, an important task during World War II. And whereas, she had a remarkable career at the federal level, including work for the National Bureau of Standards, the Pentagon, the Department of Defense, in the Advanced Research Project Agency, the Ballistics Missile Defense Research and Engineering. And whereas, Ms. Hansen was awarded the Civilian Service Medal, one of the two highest recognitions available to civilians in the Department of Defense. And whereas, she returned to Nebraska in 1972 after spending nearly 30 years in Washington, D.C. to practice law. And whereas, Ms. Hansen passed away Friday, April 16, 2021, in Aurora, Nebraska, at the age of 97. And whereas, she was known for going above and beyond, and she was asked to do and was passionate about helping those in need, especially veterans. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby honors the life of Eileen Hansen, a longtime public servant, attorney, and volunteer at the Douglas County Health Center dated this 27th day of April 2021. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Second? There was a motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Please vote.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Voting yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Mike Boyle and Morgan voting virtually, all other Commissioners voting in person.
At this time, I would ask for a motion to recess out of the Board of Commissioners and enter into the Board of Equalization. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Please vote.
Give us a second, please. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Rogers? Okay. Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Mike Boyle and Morgan voting virtually, all other Commissioners voting in person.
Okay, with that, we will begin the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle? Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend? Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers? Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, April 20, 2021. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, May 4, 2021, as a date for hearing the certified assessments, corrections, reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Maureen Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Mike Boyle and Morgan voting virtually, all other Commissioners voting in person.
Board of Equalization citizen comments. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Madam Chair, I did have Paul Bellinger, who I don't think is here, but before the meeting, he wanted to submit something for the record for citizen's comments, basically regarding his property near Hunter, Second, and Center. So I just wanted to announce that.
Put that into the... Okay, thank you. We do have two resolutions, D and E. Is there a motion to approve and adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Please vote.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Mike Boyle and Morgan voting virtually, all other Commissioners voting in person.
Thank you. We will now go back to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Is there a roll call?
Commissioner Maureen Boyle? Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend? Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item 1, minutes and claims. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, April 20, 2021. There are also two minutes from the pre-Board meetings of April 12 and April 19 that are available. And Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, April 27, 2021. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Voting yes.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Mike Boyle and Morgan voting virtually, all other Commissioners voting in person.
Next, we have the consent agenda, Items A through J. Please note, on Item G3, the revised amount there should read $126,868.75. We left off the 75 cents on the agenda piece. With that, is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I can ask for us that item to be removed. I need to vote separately on it.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, Items A through J minus G3?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers. Is there a second? Motion, seconded by Commissioner Mike Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Voting yes. Yes.
And Commissioner Morgan, I got your yes vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Mike Boyle and Morgan voting virtually, all other Commissioners voting in person.
Going back to consent, Item G3, is there a motion to approve? He can't. Motion by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Mike Friend. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mike?
Voting yes. I vote yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers abstains. And Commissioner Mike Boyle and Mr. Morgan voting virtually, all other commissioners voting yes in person.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. My extended remarks will be later on during legislature comments, but I want to talk about something that was defeated once again in the state Capitol, the fourth or fifth time over recent years. LR7 was a petition for a convention of states at which citizens meet, not legislators, but citizens meet in a multi-state interstate convention to develop proposals for amendments. Proposals only. That's all it is, and it is not a constitutional amendment. It's been defeated at the State House many times because people from outside this state with their so-called best practices come in and scare you away from it as it opening up another constitutional convention. But right there, right here in River City, and down there, there's a river also, our elected officials do not understand Article 5 of the Constitution. It cannot be another constitutional convention. There was no intent to ever allow that. This is simply a third way for the citizens to petition their government and to propose changes rather than picking up the arms and throwing off that government. Founding fathers were wise enough to put that in there at the last minute based on some protests from people that would not sign the new constitution unless they did. Their intent is to allow me and citizens like me to meet, form a group, and propose our own proposal for a meeting. I mean, a petition at which, yes, our state legislatures have the requirement to transmit that for us. The two ways that are very clear in Article 5 are the federal government can do it, the state governments could file their own petition. When the founding fathers said state legislatures, they meant the legislature. When they said the states, they meant me and citizens like me, meeting with other citizens to propose our own. Didn't require that we come up with the specifics. It just allowed as in many years past, even before our declaration, before we threw the king off, we had interstate conventions. We did not include legislatures because they were loyalists, and we were wanting to throw off the king. So why in the hell would you invite your enemies to sit in with you on those conventions? And why, when you can't trust the king, would the founding fathers say you have to trust the state legislature regardless of whether they are representing you or not? Regardless of whether they're following their oath to support the Constitution? They didn't mean that. They also mean when our state legislature doesn't, we also should be able to propose and throw off that government. But unfortunately, they think they have all the power, and then this body works with them on the legislative agenda. I'll talk later. People like me don't have a ghost chance because you really don't want to hear us. You really want to shut down the right to petition, which is a guaranteed right. You really do want to shut down the First Amendment. You've done that many times here in this body. And you really want to shut down open meetings. You've tried. You've tried to shut down citizen comments, all because somebody on a national basis, best practices advises you to do so. The National Association of this, the National Association of that, federal legislatures, state legislatures, county legislatures, and yes, the city legislators. All spend our tax dollars going to listen to somebody else, but they don't want to give us, if we're lucky, more than three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Chief Deputy Wayne Hudson, Douglas County Sheriff. I'm here to acknowledge two of our county employees, areas that really do a good job for us. And that is the Douglas County Attorney's Office, specifically Teresa Urick and her staff, and John Solano and the County Garage. I'll start with John Solano. We really rely on our vehicles to be up and running and in working order. Prior to John Solano, we've always had some problems having high mileage vehicles, but our fleet has never been as good as it is right now. So for that, I'd like to thank John Solano and the Garage Staff. Teresa Urick, she reviews all of our contracts, everything that handles in the Civil Division. So for that, I'd like to thank her and her office because without them, we would have a lot of problems with going forward on certain acts. So I'd like to thank Teresa, appreciate it, and John Solano.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to presentations. We have our regularly scheduled COVID update and vaccine plan update, presented by Dr. Adi Poor. Good morning, Doctor.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just would like to talk to you quickly about what we are seeing in our community. So we have a seven-day rolling average of 18 new cases per 100,000 at this time. Just for context, we want that to be below 10. We have seen last week 946 cases, which is 247 cases less than the week before, or a 20% decrease. We have also seen less testing being done. Where I always used to say the last four weeks were about 17,000 tests a week. Last week, we only saw 15,000 tests, 15,121, which was also 194 less than the week before, or an 11% decrease. So with that, our positivity rate has decreased to 6.3% from 7%. And I just heard from the state, the state is actually now overall at a 4.8% positivity rate. I have to share with you that Sunday, for the first day in about many, many weeks, we have seen the total case count below 50 a day, and that is really good. So we are trending in the right direction. But of those cases that we have, when we look at it over the last two weeks, 25% of those new cases are into the 0 to 19-year-old. 21% are in those 20 to 29, and 20% are in those 30 to 39. So in total, 66% of the cases are 0 to 39. You know, I posed a question to our epidemiologists to get some more input, and I think their input is important. What we are seeing, we used to say younger people are asymptomatic. And I said, if they are asymptomatic, how can we identify them as cases now? And what they are saying, what we are seeing is with the variant, individuals, younger people who have been infected with the variant are more symptomatic. So that means then when they are symptomatic, they go and get tested. And that's why I think we see the increase in cases at this time. Hospitalization, we had 83 COVID patients in the hospital as of last night. I just want to share with you, last week, that was 117. So since then, we have seen a continuous decrease in cases. 35 of those patients are in the ICU and 19% on vents. And I just look back at March, at April last year, because now we have one year to look back. At that time, we had 48 individuals in the hospital compared to 83 today. So just want to remind us, we still have a ways to go. 696 deaths have been reported for a case fatality of 0.99%. And we have eight deaths in April. None of them were fully vaccinated. Three of them were in their 40s and the other, and 40s, and two of them in their 50s, and the other one were elderly. I also want to share with you, the lowest monthly death rate that we had compared to now was in April 2020. And at that time, the death rate, the death incident was 14. And up to now, we have seen eight in April. So it really shows you those vaccinations work. So let me talk a little bit about vaccination effort. And the effort is huge in our community. We have administered 397,736 total doses up to now. 241,000 or 56.5% of our residents have received at least one dose. And yesterday, we went over the mark where 40% of our community is fully vaccinated. When we look at those 65 and above, 92.5% have received at least one dose. So let's talk about race and ethnicity. And here, I'm sharing again with one dose. In the white population, 53.8% have been vaccinated. African-American, 34%. Native American, 44.7%. Asian, 54.8%. And Hispanic, 44.6%. When I look back at what I shared with you last week, the highest increase has been in the Asian population with a 3.2% increase, followed by our Hispanics with 2.8% increase within a week. And then we have whites and Native Americans. And last, with 1.2% increase are African-Americans. When we look at our ages, of course, as you can imagine, the higher the age, the more of them have received one dose. But it's interesting to show, when we start from the lowest age group, 16 to 19 years old, they have received 32.8% have been vaccinated, at least with one shot. 20 to 34, 41.2%, and then it goes up. The highest increase between last week, when I talked to you, has been in the 16 to 19 years old. And that, of course, 3.8% increase. And that also goes hand in hand. Hopefully, we see even further increase because we are going to go in schools starting yesterday. But according to the state map, Douglas County is now number two in regards to the percentage of their population that has been fully vaccinated. We are right behind Lincoln Lancaster. If you think about the population of Lincoln Lancaster, it's 245,936 for this population. And we have probably administered, let me, we have administered 241,418 one doses, or 397. I mean, we could have, we could have vaccinated most of Lincoln Lancaster. So let's not even talk about the smaller communities who have a lot, much less population. So I'm proud of all the efforts that are going on. Allocations this week, we accepted 25,060 allocation. 21,060 are VISA and 4,000 are Moderna. We are one of the only counties who has accepted this large dose, as you can imagine. And we decided to accept those because we are having all these vaccination events going on in the community this week, especially in regards to high school testing. This may differ from last week, from, may differ from next week because many counties, including Lincoln Lancaster, did not accept any new allocation of vaccine. So just to run through again, today is a busy day. We are doing two high schools today. Omaha South High from 4:00 to 8:00, and Millard North High. And tomorrow, again, we are doing Millard, and on Thursday, we are doing Benson. North Star is going on Saturday, and Westside High School is also on Saturday. And then on Sunday, we have Omaha North High, and of course, all the schools that are, all the events that are going on, like Girls Inc. and Nebraska Medicine and so on. But next week, we are doing Creighton Prep, Central High, Northwest High, and Bryan High School. And we are also partnering with Sarpy County with Papillion South High School, Bellevue, and Gretna High School. So that's kind of my report for today. All of our clinics are walk-ins now, so anybody can go in. What we are seeing is, we are providing still about, on our 35th and L Street side, about 1,200 vaccines are allocated to that site. We have about 300 to 400 walk-ins every day. Very often, kind of towards the late afternoon. So we are starting to shift, make sure too, that we are shifting a little bit more against that after-work walk-ins. And we are adjusting our schedule, whatever the need is in the community. So that's kind of where we are. A lot of work going on with the van going around to different sites, as you can imagine. Really great outreach. What I think may be interesting, I talked to you last time that we are trying to go into businesses now. What we have found out that most of the businesses, actually all of them that we have contacted up to now, they do not feel the need to have a vaccination site at their work site because they think the individuals who had wanted to be vaccinated have gone or are going to a community site. So we'll evaluate that further, and if we find a business that will want a vaccination site, we'll have that done. That's kind of my report for today.
Thank you, Dr. Poor. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thanks, Doctor. Just to recap, the number of deaths is 600.
696.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Kavanaugh, your mic.
Can you put your mic down?
The number of cases is 70,311. So the case fatality is 0.99% in Douglas County.
Okay, roughly at 1%.
Well, I try to stay below 1, yes.
You're an optimist, Doctor. I like that. This initiative to go to the schools, and I was heartened to hear that you had my alma mater on there, but did you include OPS schools in that?
Oh, yes. We included. Oh, yes. We included every high school from OPS. Dr. Logan felt it was important that every high school was included. So we did every high school in OPS. However, some of the other schools, like Bennington and so on, they felt like they could get, Bennington Elkhorn, they could get in, in with Westside or Millot. So in the western part of the county, we only did Millot North on two days and Westside, kind of in the middle of the county. But we did, we are gonna do all OPS high schools.
That's great. So the intent is to do the eligible populations in all public and private high schools in Douglas County? Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
That's great. And you mentioned the van that's going around. When you go to these schools, is that with the van or how does that actually work?
No, the high schools are gonna be onsite. We have been at North High many times. We have been at Millot before. We have been at Westside before. So we set it up, and it's from four to eight after school is out. So it's not, it's not the van. It's a whole setup where people come in, they register, they get vaccinated, and then they sit for fifteen minutes.
So that number that you gave us for the sixteen, nineteen-year-old population, I think, was like thirty-two point eight, maybe, something like that?
Correct, thirty-two point eight percent. That is parents who brought their, their young people to a community clinic.
Okay, will that also include these school numbers as they go forward?
Absolutely. It will include the school numbers.
So that should bump that, that cohort up considerably, shouldn't it?
Yes, that's, that's what we hope.
That's great. Well, thank you, Doctor. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
So just, just a few questions again. First, if the clinics are now walk-ins, do people still have to go to the website to register?
No, Commissioner Boyle, they don't.
Okay, good. And then also, as far as the, the walk-ins and the vaccination events, are, do you feel like they're, they're, they're busy? Are all the vaccines being used?
No, they are not. And, you know, we do see no-shows and those people, because everybody can still make an appointment. So we are seeing no-shows in those appointments. Potentially, people have made appointments several different sites. So we are not, and that's why I'm saying, I'm not sure that we are asking for allocation again next week from the state. If we have vaccine leftover, we won't.
I see, I see. And then the last thing, and this is just asking for an educated guess on your part. I know that we've, the Moderna and Pfizer, they're doing vaccinations on folks sixteen and over. Any thoughts as to when that, the, the studies will show that it's safe in folks younger than that?
You mean, Commissioner, you mean those studies that are going on from, that were from Pfizer, twelve to fifteen years of age? Is that what you're talking about? So those studies have been done. What I do not understand is that we have not seen further action on them. We have only seen a news release and we have, nobody has seen the raw data yet. But I would, I would assume, my guess would be, that that will come forward pretty quickly so that potentially in summer, we can vaccinate those age ranges.
Okay, great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Poor? All right. Thank you, Dr. Poor, for being with us this morning.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Keep up the good work. We'll move to public hearings. We have item A, adoption of a text change of Douglas County zoning regulations, amending Article Four. And we have with us today Dave Forrest, who is going to be here to answer any questions that we may have and give us a, well, first, give us kind of an executive summary of the issue. And then if we have any questions.
Madam Chair, are we opening the public hearing then?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Again, my name is Dave Forrest. I've taken over for Doug Cook, who is a longtime planning and zoning coordinator for Douglas County. Been here since early November and appreciate being here today. On March tenth, at the Douglas County Planning Commission meeting, there was a unanimous approval of a text change amendment to the Douglas County zoning regulations to provide for heliport use as a special use in the agricultural district. The origin of this vote was that the prior, the, with the recent changes to the Douglas County zoning regulations, all aviation uses were removed. The staff at the time did not anticipate that there would be need for an aviation use in the new regulations. But low and behold, Brent Wolf, who's here with us today, who is the president of Hexagon Helicopters, approached us and wanted to relocate his business from a current location in Douglas County to another location approximately a quarter mile west of the intersection of Highway thirty-six and two-seventy-six. And that's the map that you see on the screen over there. That's where he'd like to move. At the moment, he's further towards the residential sections of rural Douglas County. So he'd like to get away from some of the encroaching residential development. And I think that's really all I have to say. You, you've each gotten a copy of the draft text amendment. And as I said, there was no, there was no opposition. It was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission.
So this first item, just so we're clear, is the adoption of the text change.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
There are a couple of questions. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. So this resolution would change us from not being able to allow helicopter pads to having the power to allow that?
That's correct.
Okay. The helicopter operation, as I understand it, exists currently. Is that right?
That's correct.
So did they predate this, this change to not allow them to happen? I mean, I'm, I'm.
They did predate that, yes.
So their kind of grandfather did?
I would say that's correct.
Right. And is somebody here from Hexagon?
Yes, Brent Wolf is here and he's prepared to answer any questions. He's the president of the company.
Sure, I think we get to that in maybe the next item. But the proposal was vetted by our Planning Commission and agreed upon.
Correct. Correct.
Was there any dissent or was? Sorry?
Oh, this morning I woke up and had a seventy-seven blood count.
There we go.
Blood count?
He's multitasking.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, to answer your question about the blood count.
Blood count's a little more detailed than I wanted.
No, there was, there was no opposition by the public, no.
Well, I might have a couple of questions for Mr. Wolf, just regarding the operation itself. But my reading of this is that it has something to do more with agriculture than transportation. Is that the gist of?
Yeah, I, Brent's business is really mostly agricultural, in support of agriculture, yeah.
Okay, well, I'd be interested to hear from him, but thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dave, is there, in Article Four, just a quick question. In Article Four, we're adding language in there and we're elaborating on, on this. And I am fine with all this language. What my question would be, is does the remainder of this text, or something that we're missing, lay out guidelines as to how large the parcel would have to be? So in other words, is there some, is there somewhere in there that's saying, "Look, the, the helipads in here, you've gotta have, you know, five acres to be able to implement this. You've gotta have five acres away from anything else." So it's gotta be yours and it's gotta be away from everybody else's property, right? To a certain, to a certain amount, or a certain acre or mileage or whatever. Is there anything in there that lays that out? So there are no parameters? It could be a, could be a three-acre plot, right? Two acres?
It could potentially be, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It, it's interesting because the federal government really doesn't enforce any design guidelines on operations like Brent's, which don't receive any federal aviation dollars. So that, so it really is a matter of whether the public, whether the pilot, you know, feels safe enough to, you know, take off and, and land. And it's really up to the pilot's skill and experience.
Okay, good information. The feds, not yet. The feds love to tell people what they can do with their private property. So that's just a little, I'm just opining, sorry. I'm worried about it and, and, and a little bit from the standpoint. In general, I don't like the governments necessarily telling people what they can do with their private property. Now, there are always, there are always qualifications to that and that's what you have to deal with and the, and the planning board has to deal with on a consistent basis. So that was the reason for my question. I'm trying to figure out if there were parameters later on it, so thank you.
Sure.
No other questions from Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Mike Boyle? Can you unmute?
Thank you.
There we go.
I was wondering whether you have flown any helicopters in the area so that people living nearby have a clue what's happening? I know they're notified and so forth, but are they aware of the noise and so forth? Or what, what do you, have you done anything like that?
Is that a question for the, the business operator or for me? I'm sorry.
Well, I suppose the business operator, or if you represent him, whatever. Just curious whether any helicopters have been flown in there to kind of give up some of the people who live nearby what the sound might be, if that is granted, if this is granted?
I think that might be a question for Brent.
But on the next item, not this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. This is just the text change within our comprehensive plan that we're making right now.
Okay, I don't, I don't have the agenda in front of me, sorry.
Nope, that's fine. So with that, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, I'm going to close this public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the text change? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Please vote.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Mike Boyle and Morgan voting virtually, all their Commissioners voting in person.
Okay, next is the approval for a special use permit for Hexagon Helicopters, Inc. For a preferred permission required heliport on approximately five acres. And Dave Forrest, again, is here to give us the specifics. And the public hearing is opened on this item.
And again, this is, this is a companion to the first issue. Once the Planning Commission approved the text amendment, they approved Brent's request for a special use permit for that property to operate a heliport.
Okay, any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Needs to be more from Mr. Wolf, if he'd have a second.
Hi, Brent Wolf. I'm the president and owner of Hexagon Helicopters. Yeah, I live on West Ida Street, one hundred and fifty-six Ida.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, Mr. Wolf, you've been in operation, if I read this correctly, since 2011. Have you been operating in Douglas County since that time?
Well, it, yes. So 2011, I started this business as a pilot services company. In 2017, we decided to purchase our own equipment and run our own business, doing the same things that I'd been doing, providing ag services to eastern Nebraska. So currently, so three, three and a half years ago, we moved into our current shop on one hundred and ninety-second and State Street, which is out by the National Guard, north of Elkhorn. We're renting that shop currently. We're, we're at the, at the point, we'd like to build our own shop that's a little more suited to what we do.
Okay, so just there, so this two-hundred-and-seventy-sixth and Highway thirty-six is a new location?
Yes.
Okay, and you're not operating out of that location currently?
Right.
Okay.
This would be, right now, it's, it's an old farm place is what it is. The current, the, the new location, the proposed location. Right now, we're renting a shop and it's not ideal, the shop itself. We can see the development coming our way. So between wanting to build a shop that's ideal for our operation and trying to be proactive in avoiding noise complaints, nuisance complaints.
Right.
That's, that's kind of the direction we want to get out away from people and, and build our own, our own setup.
Sure. So have you acquired this property at two-hundred-and-seventy-sixth?
It's, we've got a purchase contract on it pending zoning approval.
Okay. And if I understand this, and correct me if I'm wrong, you operate one helicopter now and you're gonna expand to two helicopters at the new location?
Right, yep. And it's a matter of, we've, we've been successful with one and we're to the point where we almost have too much work. We need to, if we want to keep up with the, the work we have, we need to eventually expand. It may not be right away, but within the next couple of years, I anticipate that.
If I read this correctly, it, it strikes me as kind of like crop dusting type work?
Right. We do a little bit of everything. We've helped, we did a lot of flying for the Papio NRD. And some of the Douglas County Sheriff, we've taken them, quite a few of those guys two years ago. We still, we flew the NRD again this year for the ISGM. We do some ISGM work. Most of our summer work, starting about now, before, we do a lot of seeding, cover crop seeding and fertilizer, fungicide spraying.
Okay.
All, all the related ag work.
Do you have the second helicopter now that you?
We don't. We're, we're out of space at our current location is part of the problem.
I got you. So during the flood that we had a couple of years ago, did you play any part in that? I know there were people kind of stranded out there.
Right, we did, we did, we flew about forty hours during that two-week period. Like I said, mentioned Papio NRD. We flew, I think we flew every day for twelve days doing survey work. Marlon Peterman was kind of the, our contact guy down there. The Waterloo, Douglas County ended up setting up a, kind of a remote command post, I guess you'd call it, out of Waterloo. And we flew, yeah, half a dozen at least flights with either the Douglas County Sheriff or the Waterloo Fire Department. Just, we're in the area and it's, it'd be crazy not to. We've got the capability and, you know, we'd help out where we can.
So do you contract with them? Do you do it on a volunteer basis or how do you do it?
One minute.
Go ahead.
A, a little of both, yeah. NRD, we've, we've kind of got an agreement going with them. Waterloo, we ended up, they ended up reimbursing us for some of our expenses that way. But it's one of those deals that, you know, we'd probably do that, even if we didn't get reimbursed.
Anybody else in Douglas County do what you do?
Not that I'm aware of. There, there's a, there are other helicopter companies. They don't do, they'll do flight instruction or sightseeing type stuff, but nobody really does what we do.
Okay, thanks a lot.
You bet.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Thank you very much. Yes, I want to ask a couple of questions about the hours of operation. Do you, is it going to be daylight sort of operations or do you know?
Yes, almost all of it would be daylight. It may be that we are out somewhere. We go out by Columbus or Wayne on a fairly regular basis. And it may be, the occasional evening activity would be basically coming back from a remote location right after dark. We, we don't do any rig, any plan. We don't anticipate any nighttime activity.
How much, how much land do you own around that area? Is it more than the five acres?
The, the purchase contract, we just got the survey done last week, actually. And it's, and it's right at four, just under four acres is what it ended up surveying out at.
Did you say four?
Yes. Which, if you look at this, one of the, the attachments is kind of the overview map. And that's, that square is, is the right, just under four.
Is there, how close is the nearest housing to you?
The closest thing, it, farm ground surrounds it. The closest thing to this is the Isaac Walton Shotgun Range, which is a quarter mile to the northeast. They're actually the closest neighbor. There are several others that are a half mile or further away. I don't think there's any houses within a half mile.
Okay, I guess with the, will there, um, you, you see that area developing as housing? I mean, that's kind of a loaded question, but I mean, I'm wondering whether, I'm looking to see if there's going to be a conflict, you know, five or 10 years from now saying no helicopters are allowed, we can't sleep and all that stuff or.
Right.
You see any of that happening or no?
Uh, I don't, I don't anticipate that anytime soon for sure. To the east of where, of our current, or the proposed location is actually flood, flood ground. It's cattail, swampy area. So I don't, I don't see that ever being developed.
Okay, and I was looking at that map and is it, the map, is that blue dot or that little blue square? Is that where you're operating?
That's the proposed location. Oh, yeah, that's, that would be the, the proposed location. Currently, we were, we're on State Street, 192nd State.
Okay. All right. Those answer my questions. I just want to make sure we don't end up, you know, having a problem in the future with people that want to develop out there, they own property and then they discover, you know, they've got a helicopter next door to them. So, but no, it has happened before in the city. We've had that problem. And so I, I appreciate the information and good luck. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners during the public hearing? Anyone here wishing to speak for or against this item? I will just add my comments about the work that you did during the flood. That, the Waterloo area is in my district and I was out there quite a bit and you guys did a excellent service for Douglas County during that time and we thank you for that.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Please vote.
Voting yes. PJ.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. And Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Yes.
It's come, it won't go.
There we go. There we go. Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Mike Boyle and Morgan voting virtually. Other commissioners voting in person.
Thank you. Next, we will move to committee items. The first is our finance committee and it's the budget report as presented. And then we do have a couple of items here. Item two is a presentation by the Douglas County Attorney's Office on department's fiscal 2122 budget request, which is in excess of their budget target amount. And the amount requested is 11,759,652. And with us today is our county attorney, Mr. Don Klein, and we also have our finance director, Joel Lorenz, who's here to answer any questions. Good morning, Don.
Good morning. Don Klein, Douglas County Attorney. And just for the record, our request isn't that, that we're asking for 11,759,000 over our budget. It's, that's what our, our budget is. And, and the reason I'm here is that the request was made for our budget to be flat for this year. I think our request is a little 200 and some thousand dollars over, over flat. And so that's why we're here. First of all, I just want to say that, you know, in the last week or so, we've lost one attorney to the private practice because he can make more money in, in the private practice. So we wish him well. But the other one is we made history this week. One of our lawyers did and we're very proud of Teresa Aliat, who is now the, is going to be sworn in probably in the next couple of weeks as the first African-American District Court Judge in the state of Nebraska, in, in the history of the state of Nebraska. So we're very proud of her. We'll miss her. She's a tremendous lawyer, a tremendous asset to our office. She was in a leadership role. And so we're just very excited to see that happen for her. So that's just an aside. The office generally, just as you are well aware, it's been, it's been a very interesting year, I'll say that much, and very difficult year in a lot of aspects. As you know, our civil division has, has worked tirelessly to advise all the different county offices about dealing with the pandemic. They advised Dr. Poor and the Health Department and the Board on all the issues with regard to COVID. They recently won a federal civil trial, a substantial civil trial, and handle all, all the things that handled all the issues with regard to, as, as Chief Hudson said, with the Sheriff's Office, the Douglas County Department of Corrections. So they've been tremendously busy. Our juvenile division's been busy. You saw the statistics, I think, with regard to the number of cases. I think the juvenile actually was down just a little bit. I think that's because the schools were closed this past year and they didn't have the number of maybe truancy cases that we might normally file, or there wasn't school resource officers at the schools and, and we have less delinquencies, I think, that we filed in the last year. The year before, they were up about 500. But they were down not significantly. It was, it was just a minor change. Our felony cases went up again to 4,883 district court cases. And those have increased, as you see, 37.5% since 2011. And that's a significant increase. We have, right now, in the Douglas County attorney's office, we have 42 homicide trials pending, which I don't ever remember there being that many. And part of that's because of the lack of ability to try cases in the last year, really. And so those are cases that are going to go to trial usually. They're not ones that we can plea out or, or reach agreements on very easily. And so that's substantial. We're extremely busy. I think we had 10 jury trials in the last month. And so it's a very busy place right now and that kind of leads into, to why we're asking for some more funding. And it's not a substantial amount of funding in comparison to the, to the rest of our budget. But if you look at the number of homicides and the number of cases that we have that are pending trial right now, it's, it's extremely substantial. And so I'll start the easy part first, I think, or easier, the lower price items. With regard to our law clerks, Sarpy County pays $17.50 an hour for law clerks. Lancaster County pays $20 an hour for law clerks. We pay about $12 or $13 an hour right now. We're asking for a $2 increase to get our law clerks up to $15 an hour. That'll add about $25,000 to our budget. We have to do that. I mean, we got to be somewhat competitive, even though we're still going to be quite a bit less those, those other two jurisdictions with regard to our law clerks. So that's one thing. I've asked for an additional trial assistant and additional attorney in our criminal division because of our overload right now. And that's probably about, I don't know, that's probably about $100,000 total. We, we hire our new lawyers right now at about 63, 65,000, 61,000, I'm sorry. And obviously, that's, that's difficult also because in comparison, Sarpy County starts their new lawyers at 68,000 and Lancaster County starts their lawyers at 69,000. I hate to even almost say that publicly because it makes it difficult, a little more difficult for us to recruit people. And we try very hard to, even with the law clerks, I tell them it's an opportunity for them to start their legal career and it's a great experience for them. And because of the, of the busyness of our office, they'll get to see so much and experience so much being there. That's a real benefit for them to be there, even if they're making less money than they would somewhere else. The same with the lawyers. With regard to the autopsies, that's something we really don't control unless you don't want us to do autopsies. We just, we do them. And you know how the coroner, the coroner's office is a seven days a week, 24-hour on-call job. I'm very familiar with it. I used to do it all the time when I was a deputy. Jim Keenan was the coroner and I was his backup. I think it's an extremely important part of our office. We deal with the public all the time. We deal with all the funeral directors and, and we deal with all the emergency rooms, all the hospitals and the public in a time of, of very emotional time period for them, the loss of a loved one. So we also have to, as a coroner, we fill out the death certificates. So we have to put on cause and manner of death on every death certificate that comes in. So normally, if it's not an attended death, and by attended, I mean somebody who's in the hospital, who's being treated by a physician, who has a known illness, or it's a situation where somebody passes away, we'll call their physician if they have one. We'll ask that physician, do you feel comfortable signing off on the death certificate as to what the cause of death is? Sometimes because they haven't seen that person sometime, if it's not a, they're not under some sort of a terminal illness, then they don't feel comfortable and we have to do an autopsy on them. So every trauma death, every motor vehicle death, every suicide or potential suicide, obviously all the homicides, and then anytime there's an unattended death where there's a question as to why this person died, we have to do a forensic autopsy. We have Dr. Bowen, Dr. Elif, Dr. Lindy and Dr. Berg, who are forensic pathologists. Three of them are board certified, which is not something that you find in a lot of different areas. So we're very fortunate to have them working for us in that capacity. And the numbers, you know, have gone up and they'll, they'll continue to go up just because of the volume of people that are here in Douglas County and people die. And we have to do autopsies on them. Our cost per autopsy is $1,800. And that's gone up quite a bit in years because it was so low before. Dr. Bowen, Dr. Jones, Dr. Rothman, if you know the history here, almost did a lot of this work as a public service. But to get the qualified doctors to come here, I think Dr. Elif came here from Indiana. I think Dr. Lindy came here from another jurisdiction. We need those kinds of people to do these posts because we need the expert witnesses to testify at trial regarding cause of death and to have these death certificates done. So, but we, we, we pay them $1,800 a post, which is low. I talked to Matt Wilber yesterday, the Potawatomi County Attorney. In Iowa, they have a medical examiner system. They have to ship the body to Ankeny, Iowa for the post to be done. Sometimes that takes time. It's not very good from the public service standpoint. But the county of Potawatomi County has charged $2,000 per autopsy, plus toxicology, plus a transport fee, plus if they take photos at the autopsy, they charge the county for the photos they take, all these kinds of things. So it ends up being a pretty expensive thing for Potawatomi County. Lancaster County pays $2,500 a post for autopsy. We pay 1,800 plus the toxicology fees. I think, I think our, our person that does our budget kind of averaged out toxicology fees and any other fees involved says usually it comes to a little over $2,000 per autopsy, which is very, very low priced when it compared, if you compare it around the country to forensic autopsies. We're not talking about other autopsy where a physician might just say, the family says, I want you to look at the person's lungs or something like that. And the doctor might do that. And that's, that's less expensive. But to do a forensic autopsy, a complete forensic autopsy is, is usually 2,500 to 3,000. UNMC used to do some of those, have, have residents do forensic autopsies and charge $3,000 per autopsy. And I don't think they even have a forensic pathologist on, on staff right now. I think Dr. Bowen actually teaches and some of our other forensic pathologists teach at the, at the med center right now. So I think our, our costs, we're, we're very cognizant of costs in the county attorney's office and the county attorney as the coroner is. And we want to keep our, our prices as low as we can. And we've done that over the years and yet provide the kind of service that we need to our people in the public, our funeral directors and, and everybody else that's involved and give them the service that they need in these very difficult circumstances. The other thing I'd like to, to point out, and I've pointed this out to you before, and I don't know how many people have, have taken me up on, on actually going there, but you know, we, we partnered in a public-private partnership with these doctors and Livon, Nebraska. It's a tremendous thing, I think, for all of your constituents and my constituents, that we do whatever we can to make the best out of a terrible situation when somebody passes away. And they want, they or their family wants them to be an organ donor. So we, we partnered with them. We've worked very hard over the last, since I've been county attorney, and we, we do this around the state. We, I have calls all the time from county attorneys about, hey, can we do organ recovery or tissue recovery or bone recovery or eye recovery on these things and still have a forensic autopsy and have it be successful and be able to tell us the cause of death? I say, yes, you can do this. It, we've done it for years. Our doctors work very well with Livon. And so we're able to do that. And I think it's, it's very good for the people of Douglas County and I think for the people of state of Nebraska, if everybody would do it that way, because it works and we don't have any problems in that regard. There was always the question about doing a forensic autopsy and maybe have an organ recovery take place before that. The doctors from Livon will testify if we need them at a trial about the organ recovery. They're obviously not going to take an organ that isn't working properly. And usually they'll talk to our forensic pathologists and they'll make sure that they don't disturb anything that the forensic pathologists would need in the course of that autopsy. So it's a great public, again, private partnership. And then the last part of that is, as you're aware, and I've told you before, our county hospital morgue was very, I guess I'll use the term antiquated. It was poor ventilation, poor storage, facility was pretty outdated. We were able to team up with Livon and their new building at 38th and Leveux Street and they, and they built us three top-of-the-line autopsy suites in that facility. And if you ever get the opportunity, should, should take a look at that. And now the storage for 24 bodies in, in that morgue, which we only had capacity for 12 before. It's a, it's a tremendous facility and it doesn't cost Douglas County anything, not a dime. And that's because of our doctors, they do autopsies for other counties and probably the eastern half of Nebraska. And they charge a, a, a use fee for the facility. All that money goes to pay for the rent that, to Livon. Douglas County doesn't pay anything for it. And so, you know, it'll probably cost us, I would guess, a million and a half to $2 million to build out what we, what we have access to and use as an autopsy facility. And that's because of the partnership with the Douglas County Attorney and the coroner, with Livon and the doctors that we currently use. So it's, it's a great thing. I understand that there's a increase in pricing. It's because of, of doing more posts and having the qualified people that we do. But it's a, it's a, it's a very important service that we provide. It's absolutely necessary for us to be within the court system and to be able to fill out a death certificate. We have to know cause of death. So all those circumstances that we talk about is, you know, like you said, the trauma deaths of any kind. And then certainly if somebody passes away and, and we don't know why they died, I mean, I think it's our responsibility is, at the county, is to find out, you know, if there's a contagion that's, that's, that's going through Douglas County and maybe we've had several people die. Right now, we're seeing honestly an increase with regard to deaths from fentanyl. That's anecdotally, I don't have the statistics. I'm looking into that. But that tells us something that we can work on from a law enforcement perspective also, that this is a problem that we have. So that's why I guess from here, I, we need more money to, to handle those. And that's just an anticipation of this next year's budget. Maybe we won't and that's possible. But we're, we're planning kind of the, what we would need. I, I would rather do it this way than have to come into you at the end of the year and say, hey, we're short. We need more money because we've got these autopsies that the numbers have, have gone up on us. But as far as from the cost perspective, per autopsy, we, we've got a very good system, very reasonable system. It's, it's, the costs are about as low as they can get in a, in a, in the city of the size of Omaha, Nebraska and Douglas County. So I'd be, there's a lot of things I could talk about with regard to the office. And I think I should probably come up here more often just to kind of fill you in on what we've got going on in the office. And if any of the commissioners, Commissioner Maureen Boyle was in, in our office about a week ago and kind of gave her the tour and. and kind of gave her the tour and showed her our luxurious, oh, she didn't actually go downstairs. I didn't make her go downstairs, the place that was flooded a couple of times. And she saw how we're kind of separated and I think it's always interesting and I think it's good for the commissioners to actually see the people that work for Douglas County. And I think, I don't think that you hear many complaints about the Douglas County Attorney's Office in the years that we've been doing this job. And I think we do a great service for, not to pat myself on the back, but for the citizens of Douglas County and for you. And so I would hope that you, anytime that you have any questions or want to stop by and to see what's going on in our place, that you don't hesitate to do so. But I'd be happy to answer any questions about this stuff.
Thank you. I don't see any hands raised for it. Oh, Commissioner Mike Boyle.
Mike, I think you may be muted.
Well, that was a good thing, not too bad. Mr. Klein, it was great to see you this morning and I appreciate all your efforts. I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. One of them is, we still have to pay filing fees, is that correct? When you file charges, criminal charges against a person accused of a crime?
Yes.
Do you know how much that's running you this year approximately?
I could tell you, just a second. Yes, we're, it's exceeding a quarter of a million dollars.
Okay, and I understand that goes to the judge's retirement fund, I think, so.
Well, not all, a portion of it does, I believe, but not the whole, right.
All right, well, we probably need to do something about that. Does it cover the state of Nebraska most of it or do you know?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll work on that some more. I want to ask you, I was in the room when, at UNMC, when the decision was made for the, I guess for the city to do the crime lab stuff, and there was a discussion, I thought was really, really good that you participated in about the autopsies. And I'm not clear, I can't remember exactly what it was, what was the arrangement for doing the autopsies? Do you remember?
Well, the autopsies have remained under the local control. You know, there's always talk at some point of doing a state medical examiner system. I think there was actually, legislature did some work on that years ago, but there was no funding for it. And I, quite frankly, after I've seen what happens in other jurisdictions like Iowa, who has a medical examiner system and the cost and the lack of, not the lack of, but time delays maybe in providing services. I think that our local control is very good to have in that regard. It's going to cost us any which way that we go, but at least we pay the price and we have the control over who does our posts and who's our experts that we use and rely on for those autopsies. And I've never really heard a, you know, we have a lot of trials and I've never heard that really being a question as to their expertise in determining cause and manner of death with regard to testimony. So I don't know if that answers your question, but it's.
It does, and I think what you're doing is really the right way to go. I have no question about that at all. I was really kind of asking, it seemed like, I remembered something about who was going to be paying for the autopsies. It seemed like we were getting a pretty good, pretty good price on it from my recollection. Is that correct?
It is correct. I mean, we really are. I think if we went to another source, I mean, we're probably talking at least $3,000 per autopsy if we. And, you know, the other thing I'll point out to you is that our docs right now, they really don't charge us hardly anything for any, they don't charge us expert witness fees. At most places, you're going to pay, when they come in to testify and prepare for testifying, they're going to charge like $350 to $400 an hour. And our doctors don't do that to us. We pay a minimal amount per case for them to testify, but it's not something that they're getting some huge expert witness fee. I think we paid $3,400 two years ago for expert witness fees for our doctors of pathology, and it was like 2,400 last year. That's probably because we didn't have as many trials, but.
Well, in my book, from what I've seen, it's, and I'm not familiar with, I don't do criminal law, but I'm very impressed with the work that you do and the bargains that you strike, so that's good. I wanted to ask you, I guess make a comment about Brenda Beadle. I've had to call her on the weekend a couple of times, and I even called her one time over in Iowa while she was registering her daughter for college, but she answered her phone.
One minute, Commissioner Boyle.
Okay, pretty impressive. The last thing I want to ask is, I wonder whether, because this backlog was caused by COVID, whether or not we could use some COVID funds to help with this as opposed to general funds. And I'd ask Joe Friend to talk about that a little later. But Don, let me take the opportunity to thank you for the excellent service you provide to the taxpayers. You're doing a terrific job and I personally appreciate what you're doing and Brenda as well.
Thanks, Ms. Sharon. And just an add-on there, because you brought her name up. You know, in the last, you know, ever since she's been my chief deputy, she does a great job.
Don, I'm going to have to wrap back around because his time's up.
Sure, okay, that's fine.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
Really just a quick comment to say that to be able to leverage that relationship with Live On Nebraska is a really, really good one. I don't see really opportunities to do that very often where I'm sure it really does provide not only a cost savings to the state, but just to have the ability to help Live On do its job, which is to provide organ donation for those who need it. So really, I think that that's a unique relationship and to leverage it like that is really a fantastic idea. And it's, I think it saves money to the taxpayers overall.
We're really proud of that relationship and the ability that we have to make sure that, when, like I said, when families and a person's an organ donor, that we can make sure that that happens. Okay, so.
It's a great idea.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Mike Boyle.
I'd like Joe Friend, or Joe, I keep doing that, sorry, that. Joe Lorenz to come up after Mr. Klein is finished to ask about that COVID funding.
All right. Any other questions?
No other questions? Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Don.
Joe, when you come up, if you could just, again, tell us that the county attorney's office budget was, and they're requesting this, and it's how much more than flat?
I don't have the number right, and you don't have to approve it today. This was just informational thing. But, you know, the total budget was 11 points some million in there, about 280 something thousand over. And Don explained why, so.
Okay, Commissioner Boyle.
Joe, can I ask you, since the backlog was caused by COVID, is there some possibility we can use some of those funds if it's available for that kind of spending?
I can't tell you yes or no yet, Commissioner Boyle, because everyone's waiting on the Treasury guidelines that are going to come out for the American Relief Fund, and they are supposed to come out any day now. And once we get those guidelines, we're going to have a much better idea what's going to qualify or not. And certainly, we're going to read those and to the extent those funds can be used for county needs, given that I think we're projected to get somewhere between 50 and 55 million dollars, we will certainly be trying to do whatever we can to spend that money for qualifying county expenses.
Do you think, are we going to be limited to the suburban area outside the city limits? Will that complicate anything?
That was just for rental and utility assistance. This is more general money for use for the county, and the city's getting their own money. So, and we're both going to be about the same, but I don't think we're going to have that geographical limitation this time.
Okay, that sounds great. Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Mike Friend.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joe, thanks. I just had a quick question. That was a good, well-reasoned, good, well-reasoned information from Attorney Klein. Thanks, thanks for that. What I was going to ask is, and we can drill down deeper later, how do those numbers break out as far as the excess? So if, what percentage of the budget excess that Don Klein was talking about is directly related to the autopsies as opposed to, you know, and again, you mind I have the numbers, but the law clerks, the new lawyers, some of the general over?
Yeah, you know, I have, I know the general amounts that autopsies and the law clerks were piece, I don't know if.
The autopsies are the majority of it, right?
That was the way it was explained to me, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the, it's, the autopsies, you know, are part of it, but there's increases for the law clerks and we can get a full accounting of each one by a specific group, yeah. We can drill down on that.
Sure, thank you, Joe.
All right, no other questions? Thank you, Joe, and thank you.
I may ask Joe one.
Oh, Commissioner Morgan.
I may ask Joe one quick question. Joe, if that's in the budget, there could be a guideline that would prohibit us from funding it from those funds from the government because it's already in the budget. I know that's what happened last year.
Yeah, you have to be careful about supplanting. But, you know, I don't know exactly, the guidelines are supposed to be out by May 1st, so once we get that, we'll have a good feel. And, you know, we had a discussion with another group last week where we talked about that. And we're not going to approve the budget until late June. So I think we'll be able to take, to incorporate the guidelines and see what we can do and maybe adjust the budget accordingly before we bring it for final approval.
Yeah, I think we should be careful about that. I am very supportive of Don Klein's request, but if we can hold off on that till a later date and get that information, I think that's what's really helpful, and Mike Friend and I have talked about that.
Right, so we'll do that. And these budget requests coming up are just informational. There's no formal approvals being given at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. All right, thank you, Joe. Thank you, County Attorney Don Klein. We will move on to our next presentation, which is by our GIS department for fiscal year 2122 budget requests, which is in excess of the budget target amount. And again, I don't have, Don Klein pointed out a good, made a good point that the amount requested is 592,583. That's the total budget. But what is the increase over last year's budget? Do we know?
Good morning. Mike Seanlaw, Douglas County GIS Administrator.
Mike, I just wanted to say, I just found the number, so we're actually, the request is about 24,187 over last year.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry.
Just so the public knows what we're talking about. Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, yeah. I've just got a few slides here I want to go through. We've got a couple new commissioners, and I don't get up in front of the board very often, so I thought I'd give you a couple slides of background. Let's go on here. Just a brief history of our department, so you know. We were formed back in 2008. It's kind of a partnership with the city of Omaha and Douglas County. Prior to that, we were city employees. The city and county agreed to form a central department under the county. And we have an interlocal with the city of Omaha, so we provide the same services to the county departments as we do to the city departments and to the public. And our funding has always been split between the city and county, depending on the level of work we do for each entity each year. We have five full-time staff. I report to Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator. And we do a lot of work, like I mentioned, with city and county departments. We also work with other agencies, the state, federal agencies, the NRDs, things like that, MAPPA. And then we provide some services to the public as well. So a little bit about what we do, it's probably the hardest part of my job, explaining what GIS means. It stands for geographic information systems. It's intelligent mapping is what we like to think, or location services. So some of the things we do, we manage a lot of data. We manage a lot of geographic data. Over 800 layers in the city and county GIS databases. We maintain a lot of that data. We manage it for other departments as well. We distribute it. There's a lot of work that goes into maintaining the data of that magnitude. And it's, the data's been around since about 1993 is when the city and county originally started moving to a digital world for this information. So we have a lot of valuable data. It's always changing. And there's a lot we can do with that. So that makes up a lot of the work that we do. We also build and host a lot of websites and apps for people to use, both internal and publicly available. Right now, we have more than 85 different apps that we host, so it's a lot more than people think. We do a lot of work with many different departments. Some examples of those are kind of public flagship mapping site that people are aware of called dogus.org, where people can go out and look at information. There's a ton of information out there and you can drill down into certain areas and look at that, look at that information. We host internal work management and asset management system called CityWorks that's used by many departments in both the city and county, so we administer that system and have for many years. We also manage the city and county's citizen reporting application called omahahotline.com, where people can report civic issues like potholes or down tree limbs and things like that. So we manage that system. We recently did a nice site for the health department, the new air quality website. That's all-inclusive and that's publicly available. So those are some examples of some of the sites we maintain. And that makes up a lot of our work as well. We also administer a lot of IT infrastructure to support all this. So we have a lot of different software and servers and things like that that we manage. Another thing we do is manage projects that are city-county kind of shared projects. We do quite a few of those. One of those big ones is acquisition of aerial photography, which is a very important dataset for many, many departments that use it every single day. We do that every couple of years and we manage that as a joint project. We work with other cities and counties and we've been doing that for many years now. We do the same thing with elevation data, which is becoming more and more important for engineering purposes as well as environmental analysis and things like that. Last year, we launched a drone imagery program. Matter of fact, today, right now, as we speak, one of my employees is out capturing drone imagery of stormwater outfalls that are very difficult to reach by the inspectors. So we're taking advantage of that technology to help perform some of those functions. And then one of my favorite things that we do are make maps. That's the easiest way for us to explain what we do to people. And usually when we show them, they get a better sense of what that means. I've got a couple of slides on the screen here that show just a few examples of some of the things we do. One of the most noteworthy things that we've worked on in this past year is the COVID dashboard that we support for the Douglas County Health Department. So we, my staff and I built this. We update it every single day. We get close to a dozen different data reports daily from the health department that we have to process and upgrade and publish. So this is a very active site and we maintain mobile versions of this as well. And so it's been very well received, well over a million hits on this since we launched it. So it's been very active. I know people look at it daily. And so that's been a big part of our work over the past year. I mentioned earlier, our public mapping website, dogus.org. It's been around since 2007 and we continue to try to improve it and add more information. This has got many different layers that you can turn on and off, different map layers. You can get all kinds of different information and we get hundreds of people using this every single day. And so we get a lot of mileage out of this public website. Another site that we have that I want to. Another site that we have that I want to point out is our Open Data Portal. We, we published this about three and a half years ago. This is a site where people can go out and download some of the most common GIS or geographic data that the city and county have. It's also a place where you can find some of those 85 different websites that we manage. Things like a zoning lookup, or trying to figure out what city you're in. I know there was a mention earlier, earlier of the rental assistance money. We just launched a site to help people looking for rental assistance figure out if they need to go to the county or the city. So we can do little things in the background like that that involve location, but don't always have a map associated with them. So you can find a lot of those resources here at our Open Data site, which is data.dogus.org. And I thought I'd bring up an actual map as the last graphic here. We just printed these. They're hot off the press, College World Series planning maps. We do these every year for event planning. And I wish I could bring down the big wall-size map with me here. It's a pretty sharp-looking map. And when you see the level of detail and information on that, and how useful it is to the different groups who support events like the College of World Series, that could, could be the Omaha Police Department, the County Sheriff, the Douglas County Emergency Management, Omaha Fire. All of those folks really appreciate and use these things. So it's good that we can provide that, that kind of service. Okay, so a couple of slides here, just my last few slides about how we work and how we allocate our costs. This slide is, as you see, there's three groups here, city, county, and enterprise. Our enterprise costs are split 50/50 between the city and county, and that's what's been in our, in our local since our inception. You can see there's been a steady trend, steady downward trend of time that we spend on, directly on city projects. This last year, there was a big spike in time we spent on county projects, and that's mostly been with the Health Department and COVID-related work. And our enterprise time stays pretty, pretty steady. So this is just a quick kind of snapshot of where, where we do our work and how much time we spend. I'd say today, we're still at about two-thirds of our work is spent directly with the City of Omaha, and about one-third directly with the county. But if you include some of those enterprise numbers. But that's, that's, can be shifting any given year, depending on different projects we do. We've got a couple big projects planned this year with the Health Department and the Sheriff's Department. So last two slides, a quick snapshot of our revenues. Our revenues come from three places, the city, the county, and MAPPA. We typically get a grant from MAPPA every year, transportation grant. We should be getting the same amount this year. That's what we've requested. That's what they've put into their request, so we're hoping that comes through as it normally does. Our revenue from the city this year will be down because of the decrease in the amount of work we've done for them, and the subsequent increase in work that we did for the county. So we have a $25,000 drop in revenue from the city and MAPPA combined as a result of that. And that little pie chart there kind of shows you where normally we get our revenue from, and, and most of it is from the city, with about a third or so from, from the county. On the expenses side, this is the overage that I'm, I'm talking about today. Our target was 568,000, and the request that we're putting in is 592,583. There's really only one reason for that overage, and it was personnel salary adjustments based on a compensation study that was done a few years ago and had to be redone. Our positions are notoriously difficult for compensation contractors, people who do that, because we're kind of a niche technology. So when they initially did that work, it wasn't, it wasn't done properly. So we had to reanalyze those positions, and that resulted in one-time adjustments for four employees. And, and that's really the increase that we're seeing today. We did everything we could to reduce our overage. We cut our non-payroll expenses by 13%. But we have a relatively small non-payroll budget. I think it's only around 115,000. So 24,000 to us is a big percentage. And it was, you know, we, we cut everywhere we could. But that's, that's kind of where we landed with the, with the salary adjustments. So that is the end of my slides, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this.
Sure.
I guess it's important to note, I think this is page four, where you give us the revenue summary with the change in revenue of a deficit of 25,713. And then note that the decrease in hours spent on city work and an increase in hours spent on county work, mostly COVID-related. So you were impacted by COVID in that regard, which is almost identical to the amount of your request over target of 24,187. So, you know, we've talked and done quite a bit about COVID funding for COVID-impacted activities that we're involved in, and that might allow us an avenue to go forward in this particular case, because it's so clearly demonstrated by your report here that, you know, this is COVID-related regarding the, the revenue. The census is coming out, and I don't know if you've gotten any access to preliminary census numbers, which will have impact on a lot of different levels.
No preliminary numbers. They're obviously very cautious about that right now. Yesterday, they released the national numbers, but I don't think the localized numbers are expected until after August. We will be prepared to immediately produce some maps and some analysis based on that data. The decennial census is something, obviously, it only comes around once in a while. So we will be ready to produce just some initial, you know, information about various demographics, whether it's population or race ethnicity, income, you know, things like that. And so we'll be, we'll be looking to do that. Our department does do all the work for the city and county in terms of providing demographic and geographic information to the census for their studies. So over the last couple of years, our staff has spent a lot of time working with both the county, the City of Omaha, and the small towns within our county on providing updates to our boundaries and things like that. So we have a pretty regular process of providing data to the census. So we're looking forward to getting some data back.
Okay. So the census only comes every four years. It happens to be this year. And the COVID thing only comes, hopefully, very rarely. But both of them impacting on you at the same time would seem to be kind of a perfect storm in terms of additional stuff that you wouldn't normally have in an off-year. Is that?
Yeah, this past year has definitely provided, you know, those two examples are great. The COVID work that we've done, we track our hours, and we can quantify how much time we've spent directly supporting COVID. And it's not just for the County Health Department. We maintained early on, at least for the first nine months of the pandemic, we maintained an internal dashboard for use by Incident Command, Omaha Fire primarily, on the number of patients they transported that had COVID symptoms and things like that. And so we were maintaining a lot of other data as well as, most of it's been for the Health Department, but it's been for some other departments as well.
Yeah, this Health Department dashboard is, you know, really, really good. I got to commend you. And it's, you know, one of the kind of best sources for accurate information on our community day by day, relative to the.
And I'd like to just point out, because the governor likes to take credit for how great the state's dashboard is, we built the first dashboard in the state of Nebraska.
Right.
And the state's contacted us to build theirs based off of what we did. So a big props to my staff. I have excellent staff, and we were
One minute.
really ahead of the game. And, and props to the epidemiology staff at the County Health Department, too. They've done, I mean, I can't imagine having, had to work in that area for, for so long. But to get all the data to us like they have, it's been tremendous. So we've been able to put that up, and I know the public's received it very well.
That's a great point. Thanks for sharing.
Sure.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
Yes, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Couple questions. One is, you said that the amount of billing going to the, the city is decreasing, and the amount to the county is increasing, mostly due to COVID. So after the COVID stuff settles down, is that going to cause you to have a budget shortfall?
No, typically, our budget, it depends on how much work we do. We have tons of demand. There's always plenty of demand. It's just a matter of how much we decide to do for the city versus the county. And we typically, it depends on projects as well. We've got a couple of big projects in the works for the county for this coming year. So we expect our county number to stay up. I don't expect the city number to keep declining too much. A lot of that decline is because the city has hired GIS staff in their departments who've taken on some of the work that we once did for them. But that's, in my opinion, I think that's plateaued. I think we will continue providing a similar level of support to what we are today. We still, you know, even though there are staff in those departments that do the same things, some of the same things that we do, we provide a ton of support for those staff. So, you know, our enterprise costs as well will, will reflect that. But I don't think, I don't think we'll see any kind of shortfall like that. I think it usually balances out pretty well.
So the demand, I guess the bottom line was, is the demand still going to be there if we see that, that shift like that? Sounds like it's still there.
Yeah, demand has never been our problem. There's always a demand.
Good. I was wondering. And then the, the second thing is, I was just noticing this might be a question for Joe and how I understand things. But your, the expenses, you're going to be over target by 24,187, but your revenues are going to go down by 25,713. So really, that's about a $50,000 budget difference there. So when we look these over, I guess I'm questioning why we're talking about 25,000 instead of 50,000.
Yeah, so that's, that's accurate. And that's also typical of how our interlocal agreement works. So the interlocal agreement basically says, depending on our time tracking and what amount of work we do for the city or county in any given year, they would be responsible for their share. And then they split the enterprise costs. So it just so happens, we did a lot more work for the county this year. So that number, you know, this year, basically, the county is paying for more work than, than what they did last year. So there is a shift of our funding. This year, the county would be shouldering more of the, our funding than the city has in past years. So it's just a natural shift, depending on the amount of work. But I would point out, too, most of that shift, most of that increase in work is COVID-related directly. So that's kind of a, an anomaly, I guess, in our normal pattern.
My question is more, we're talking about 24,000, but now we've got this revenue decrease, too. So that's, that's, I don't know how that's addressed in the budget. And it might be, again, a question for Joe.
Yeah, you're correct. But typically, how we do the budget, you know, we're, we're centered on, on less, on, on the big departments that have significant revenue, like Corrections and the Health Center, we, we do manage it on a net basis. But just to be realistic, in a budget that's over $400 million for a smaller department like this, when it's $25,000, it's really not moving the needle that much. So that's why we don't center on it. Whereas in the big departments, like I said, where we're talking sometimes upper six figures, low seven figures, that's where we're really managing the net.
Okay, so that means just that we're talking about the revenue or the expense side more than the revenue side?
Yes.
Okay, so we're kind of just not paying attention to the revenue side?
Well, we pay attention for it, but I always have some built-in slack when
Okay.
the increase in property valuations, you know, when it's been going up five and a half or 6%, that gives us an incremental pool of incremental revenue every year that, that we can use to offset
Got it.
these lower, lower revenues.
Okay, good. I just didn't know where that was going to come from.
Sure.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Mike Friend.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, thanks for the information. Really good. And it's nice meeting you. I don't know if we've gotten a chance to meet. Mike, are there, I don't want you to read anything into this question. I'm, I'm just kind of curious. Are there, are there private entities? Are there organizations in the, in the private sector that you guys contend with? So in other words, something's actually occurring. You need, the public needs certain services. Are you guys running in, I mean, Google owns the world, right? Or at least half of it. What are they doing? What are they doing that's crossing paths with, on a consistent basis with you guys in this regard? You know where I'm going with this?
Yeah, that's a good question. And it comes up often because people are very familiar with things like Google Maps or Apple Maps. Those are different products. Those are consumer-level products, and their focus is the world. Our focus is Douglas County. And as a result, I tell people this all the time, the maps that we have are far more accurate than what Google has, always. Matter of fact, Google and companies like Apple and Google and others, they get data from us to improve their maps. And we want to help them. We want the maps that people in our community use to be accurate and up to date. Our aerial photography is some of the highest resolution photography in the, in the whole country for an entity of our size, much better and more accurate than what Google provides. These may seem like subtle differences, but when it comes to the different uses, the distinct uses of this information within city and county departments, that difference in resolution and accuracy and currency can make a big difference. And so a lot of what we do is just an improved or a much more refined level of what those companies are doing. And we don't typically run into competition with, with those products.
Okay, good information. So Mike, when Google comes and offers you a tremendous amount of money, are you leaving us?
No.
I'm just, I'm just kidding. I just wanted to.
No, no, no.
Okay. Thanks for the info, Mike.
Sure, no problem.
Any other question, Commissioner Mike Boyle?
I think you're on mute.
Think you're on mute, Commissioner Boyle.
Oops. Still on mute, I think.
Yep. Let's see if Karen can unmute you, Mike.
There we go.
Okay.
There we go.
Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to behave so my phone doesn't keep ringing into the, sorry. I just want to say, Mike, first of all, your slides are absolutely terrific. They're, I wish everybody presented slides like that. They're very readable and can be understood. I want to thank you for all the maps you've done for me. And I have a question about, there was a question about the census coming up. Are you able to do a census map based on population and maybe even other factors, but primarily population?
Yeah, absolutely. Typically, we'll produce population maps by, the best, and the best geographic breakdown is by census block.
Right.
That's the data that won't come out until August, probably maybe even after August.
Okay.
As soon as we get that, we'll produce that. A, a lot of people want to get information by zip code. And we try to point out to people, zip code is one of the worst ways to spatially represent data, because it's only based on postal delivery. Zip codes are built for postal delivery. So we much prefer to use blocks and tracks, census.
Well, the county board in the past, and even the city council, I think, has used MAPPA to draw their boundaries. And if you have that data, just so that the county board maybe take this on ourselves, we can talk about that. That's another subject. I did want to mention, let's see, the, let's see, what was I going to ask you? I made some notes here. I guess that's really what I want, oh, I know, I wanted to ask you about President Biden's going to be doing a lot of things based on poverty. And I really agree with that totally, because we have so many jobs that, and responsibilities in the county that are based on poverty. And one of them that just makes me really worry a great deal is the, the youth and the opportunities that do not exist sometimes in some of our neighborhoods for, for certain children. And I, I really think we need to, to hold to that. And so I'd probably be, I'd like to be talking to you about that, if you could possibly come up with data that shows where poverty is prevalent. Can you do that as well?
Yes, we can. And, and we'll be able to do that in more accurate and more detail once that local data comes out from the census. But we actually, we have a COVID hub site where we have social and demographics statistics for Douglas County. We put that out last year. It's, it's covid19.dogus.org.
Okay.
You can find a social and demographic viewer on there that will give you some of that information. But certainly poverty is one of the demographic characteristics that we would have access to once the census releases that local data.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you, Mike. You're doing a really good job, and I've got a couple of projects coming up. I'll be in touch with you naturally. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
No other questions for Mike from the board members? Larry, do you have a question? Is that why you're standing up? Okay.
Yeah, but he's done.
Regarding this item?
Yes, in general, yeah.
Okay, anything further, Mike? Okay, thank you, Mike, for being here.
Okay, thank you.
And thanks for the good work. I know you do excellent work, and we really do appreciate. I say this a lot about some of our smaller departments and offices. They may be small, but they're sure mighty. And you fit that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to compliment this body for allowing citizens a lot more transparency than our understudies this afternoon. But as I listen to all of this, particularly on that resolution, I never owned a business, but I've always been studying business, a degree in business, and I've been in sales. And I know that if you don't spend what you did last year, generally, you're going to lose your budget for the next year. But you also need that money to increase your spending somehow because of inflation. Now, I'm a little bit weird at times, but if Chicken Lookin' said the sky is falling, you should probably go out and look rather than just let it happen or not happen. When you look at the figures on all of these things, it makes you think, is there a COVID grab going on? In the hopes that we will get the money from the federal government or somebody else. Sticky fingers, maybe? But as I drive around Omaha, and I look at all of these new street things going up that are much more massive than the old ones, and I notice that there's cameras on everything everywhere. And then last night, I'm sitting in my front yard, and the helicopter's hovering around the Dundee area. And I thought, I wonder if they can tell what brand of cigarette I'm smoking right now. Be careful what you approve. 1984, Soylent Green, The Wizard of Oz. The experts out there might not be telling you what the real intent of all of this is. Are we buying technology from China and somehow letting all of this spying on us go to them? Or is it to be used for somebody here to establish a utopian society? Who knows? Do you define what enterprise is in this information? It doesn't really explain what we use all this technology for. It shows some maps, but I don't for the last of me think that that's all they use it for. It's probably used for citizen surveillance by police under the guise of protection. But, you know, you don't, you usually protect somebody before something happens. After the fact, you go in and protect whatever's left, maybe. But you don't really technically have the right to spy on me at the stop sign or whatever. If I commit a crime, fine. But the world heralded I do an article on what all this technology is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. We, no other questions or comments. We have just one last item under. It's just accepting the monthly fee report from the Douglas County Clerk's Comptroller for March of 2021. We'll now move to child and youth services, the Douglas County Youth Center report from Kim Havacati.
Well, good morning, commissioners. My name is Dr. Abby Carbaugh, and I am the Juvenile Justice Data Administrator here for Douglas County. I think this is my first time in front of the full board, so I wanted to take just a moment and give you a little bit of background on myself. So I graduated from the University of Nebraska at Omaha in 2013 with my PhD in criminal justice. And my areas of concentration were institutional corrections, statistics, and research methods. So around the time I was getting ready to graduate, I was hired as the research manager for the Nebraska Department of Correctional Services. And I was there for the last eight years, most recently as the research director. So in that role, my team and I were responsible for examining the trends of what was bringing people into the system. We evaluated our classification and risk needs assessment tools to make sure that we were providing interventions that were targeted at the appropriate domains and need areas and at the right time. And we also provided our facility staff with reports and rosters and things they needed to do just in their day-to-day work. So I came here to Douglas County in January, and I'm very happy to be here. I really enjoyed the work that I did working with the adult system. But just for my own public service satisfaction, I'm very excited to be working with youth and having an opportunity to bring some of that experience and expertise and intervene with our youth at a younger age. So we can either help keep at-risk kids from progressing into the juvenile system or keep those kids who are just a system-involved from progressing into the adult system. So what I'm here to do today is give you a report on our population here at the Douglas County Youth Center. This is a combination of data about DCYC and the Behavioral Health Initiative that I believe you've seen before. I've just updated it to be through the first quarter of this year. And then I've presented it in a little bit of a different way so we can get some of the historical trends as well. So after I'm done with this presentation, Brad Alexander is here, and he will be able to speak to some of the daily operations and things that are going on within the youth facility in more detail. So I'm sure if I don't have the answer to any questions you may have, he can help fill in those gaps. So the first thing that we have here is just a graph of our total population for the last two years and then the first quarter of this year. In the pre-COVID era, so 2019, and then the first quarter of 2020, our average population was about 80 youth in the center. And then we see the reduction between April of 2020 through July. And then it peaked a little bit around wintertime, but it's still going back down. One of the things I do want to draw your attention to is our population at the end of March. So we had an average daily population of 50 youth who were detained. And if you look back to December of 2019, when we were at 90, we are almost at a 50% decrease. So most of the reduction in the population has come from boys. The females who are detained make up a pretty small proportion, or a pretty small number of the youth who are detained. So their relative proportion has remained pretty consistent. Now, this is the same graphic, but instead of breaking it down by gender, it's broken down by the court type. So you can see the blue indicates the youth who are being charged as adults, and the gold is the youth who are in juvenile court. And really, the primary reduction in the population that we've seen has been for those youth in juvenile court. Back in 2019, we were seeing about 1.6 youth detained on juvenile court charges for every one youth we had there charged as an adult. And over time, that's been reduced. So since about November, we have a pretty even split. We're at 1.1 youth in juvenile court for every one youth in adult court. And this is especially striking when you look back at March of 2016, where we had a 1 to 2.5 youth ratio there. One of the primary drivers for this reduction could be a law change that occurred in 2019. This required probation to have a more extensive review of youth in making the detention determination. And so with that, if they're looking at more things, if they're taking more things into account and taking a closer look, we're seeing fewer youth being detained and more community alternatives implemented. So part of what contributes to a total population is the number of admissions we have. And so here, again, you can see that we've had some pretty dramatic reductions in admissions post-COVID. So in 2019, we were averaging around 80 new admissions a month. And in the first quarter of 2020, it was around 68. During COVID, we were at 57, and then we've been averaging 43 for the first quarter of this year. And again, if we want to make some comparisons, we had 38 admissions in March. So that's a little more than one youth being admitted to detention a day. And if we compare that back to a year and a half ago, where we were at 93 youth admitted, we're doing pretty good in reducing our numbers coming in. This just steps us back to see what that trend has looked like over a longer period of time. And so really, since about 2008, we've seen this gradual downward reduction in the number of admissions that we have. The biggest reduction is between 2019 and 2020, where we dropped around 230 kids. So again, the combination of that legislative change with what we've seen in terms of everything else with COVID is likely to have produced that reduction. Now, I did just hear that zip code maps are the worst way to present geographic information, so I apologize for this. But what I do have here is what we know about the kids and where they're coming from. This does look back to 2007, and it goes through the end of 2020. And really, I put it like this because year to year, we're seeing the same consistent trends of youth coming from the same areas of Douglas County. We are getting youth coming in from every zip code, but we do see some concentrations in northeast and southeast Douglas County. And there are about three zip codes that account for 40% of our admissions. The smaller graphic in the corner shows that we have had a reduction in youth admitted from outside of Douglas County. So we had about 15% of our admissions were coming from outside of Douglas County in 2007 compared to just over 9% in 2020. I think there's a few reasons for that. One could be changes in other counties and their ability to manage their juvenile detention population. Some of it could be how, changes in how we've tracked information over time. So instead of documenting where an offense occurred or the location a child was when they were brought into the system, it could be their home address. So there were a lot of council-bluff zip codes in our dataset that I was examining. And then some of it is just random typos that you encounter. So for example, 68161 is a zip code in Germany, which took me a while to figure out why my graphic wasn't working. But it's probably just a typo in the data. So if we look at admissions by court type, we can see, again, there's a pretty significant decrease in the number of youth who are admitted on adult charges that occurred between 2014 and 2015. Again, I think this is the result of a legislative change. So back in 2014, LB464 required all misdemeanors, Class III, 3A, and IV felonies to start in juvenile court. So all of those youth presumably would have been not showing up in the adult court population because they would have originated in juvenile court. But with that said, I think what's very interesting is that while we were down about 200 admissions for the youth charged as adults, the number of admissions for youth in juvenile court only went up by about 50. So if we are taking a better look, again, I think if we're just taking a better look at who these kids are, what their risks and their needs have to be addressed, then we're doing a better job of managing them outside of a secure setting. So we've talked about total population, and we've talked about admissions. So the next thing that I want to look at is our length of stay. So youth who are detained on adult charges tend to stay about three times as long at DCYC as the youth who are charged in juvenile court. So the juvenile court cases down in the bottom are generally staying right over a month, so about four to six weeks is their typical length of stay. Where the youth who are in adult court have been there for much longer. Between 2017 and 2019, the average length of stay for those youth was about three to four months. In 2020, it increased to six months, again, probably due to some COVID and quarantining increases. You can see a small increase in the juvenile court population as well. And for the first quarter of this year, based on those youth who have been released, the length of stay has been about five months. What was not taken into account in factoring the length of stay was those youth who are booked and released on the same day. And that's what the graphic on the right hand shows you. There's a significant increase in the juvenile court population this time between 2012 and 2013. And again, you guessed it, it's a legislative change. So at that time, the state legislature passed a law that excluded status offenders from being detained in a secure facility. And so that could be contributing to the same day booking and releasing. They're getting them into the system, making sure that we know about them, but they're not actually being detained. They're being released onto some other status. This is just a little breakdown of the demographics of the youth who are in DCYC by their court status again. So even though the numbers are going down each year, you can see that the trends are fairly consistent. So for those youth in juvenile court, we house youth anywhere between the ages of 11 and 18. But really, between that 14 and 17-year-old range is where the majority of our population falls. And then similarly with adult court, we have youth at DCYC between the ages of 14 and 18. But really, it's that 16 and 17-year-old group that's accounting for most of the population. In terms of race and ethnicity, black youth account for about half of all youth detained in DCYC. This is true for both adult and juvenile court, and though it's not shown here, it's also the same for boys and girls. So the black youth are about half of the population for both of the gender groups as well. Hispanic youth are also overrepresented in the DCYC population relative to their proportion in society. They're about 25% of youth admitted for adult court charges and about 17% of youth admitted for juvenile court. These two graphics break down the adult and juvenile court populations by what stage of the process they're in. So if they are pre-adjudicated or adjudicated in juvenile court, or if they are pre-trial or being held after sentencing for adult court. So with regard to those in juvenile court, there's a downward trend in the adjudicated, so the dark blue line, that really began around 2008 and has been pretty consistently declining since that time. And then around about 2012, we saw an increase in the pre-adjudication population. With adult court processing, the overall number of youth who are in DCYC after sentencing has remained relatively consistent. But we've had some pretty drastic decreases in the number of youth held pre-trial. So the drop from 14 to 15 again is probably the result of the misdemeanors and lower-level felonies originating in juvenile court. And that could also correspond, there's a little bit of an increase in the pre-adjudicated juvenile court population between 2014 and 2015. So again, we're not seeing exactly a one-for-one swap, but we are seeing a little bit of a shift there. So the reasons that, the reasons why juveniles are detained in the first place. For juvenile court charges, the number of youth being detained for technical violations has been very steadily decreasing since 2014. And the new charge, youth there on new charges has been increasing gradually since that same time. And 2019 is when we saw youth being held on new charges actually outpacing the number being held for technical violations. Youth charged as adults are consistently primarily detained on new offenses. We have about 75 to 85% of our youth who are detained on adult charges are there for their new offense. And again, that drop in 2014 and 2015, you can see again here. This just goes into a little bit more detail of what we looked at. So these are the youth in the juvenile court population. If they are brought there on new charges, these are what they are. For the last three years, the top eight offenses have been the top eight offenses, which I thought was pretty interesting. So they may have reordered, but these are still the top reasons for detention. So we're seeing property offenses, theft, interpersonal offenses, assault and robbery, and sexual assault, and then weapon possession, which is distinguished from weapons use. And then if we look at the technical violations, again, it's the same top three, just kind of reordered. Unlawful absence, a violation of probation, or a failure to appear in court. For the adult charges, we're seeing youth detained pretty much on more serious offenses. So robbery, and now we have weapon use in addition to the weapon possession. We still have sexual assault and assault, and then we also have a few youth who were admitted on homicides. Because adult probation and juvenile probation are so different in how they're administered and what the requirements are, I didn't necessarily break out the youth admitted on adult technical violation charges. But if you do need that information, I can provide that to you later. So the last thing that I have, this is the ZIP Code map again, but this is just for our population as of March 31st of this year. So we had 45 youth detained on March 31st. And again, we had about 40% who are coming from ZIP Codes in northeast and southeast Douglas County. So that is what I have. And then I believe we'll get more information about the actual day-to-day operations of DCYC. So I didn't know if you had any questions at this time, or?
Go through the presentations, and then we'll wrap back with questions. So Brad, do you want to present the daily operations, please?
Good morning, Commissioners, Brad Alexander, Douglas County Youth Center.
Good morning.
Kim would ask that I share some information about how we've been managing COVID over the course of the past year. And I know that you'd received some information about a variety of our efforts to try to mitigate the pandemic and to work through that. But just to give you an update, through the course of this, we've had 42 staff members that have tested positive. We have had six youth that have tested positive. Which, you know, knock on wood, I think that's pretty good. Over the course of that time, we've probably had somewhere in the neighborhood of 800 admissions. So I just couldn't be more proud of the people that worked there and the efforts that they've taken. The staff that have been vaccinated, or somewhere in the neighborhood of 56% to 60% of our staff that have been fully vaccinated. We've got all of our educators that are vaccinated, I think, except maybe one. And one of the things that I know that we've been asked is, you know, we've been doing school virtually, and I think our education department's done an outstanding job to try to continue to work with our kids and to get them to crank out credits. Even under this scenario, we've had, I think, three or four kids that have graduated. We did a virtual graduation ceremony with one kid and their families. I've been in constant communication with Dr. Poor, and she's just an incredible resource for us. We're really, really fortunate to have her on our side right now. And one of the conversations we've had is when can we bring the teachers back in and really get back to something close to normal? And just, I think it was the 15th or 16th, she said, let's start transitioning there now. And so the fortunate thing was that we already had a plan in place to do that. And Dave Collins, he kind of got double booked today, but if you don't mind, just briefly what our plan is to bring the educators back into the Youth Center to work with the kids. So I see him on the screen here, so I'll turn it over to Dave.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you?
Good morning.
Well, it's nice to see everybody. Just to kind of let you know, we've been doing virtual education since September. And it's been a challenge, but I think we've gotten through the hard part. And we're excited to be back starting May 3rd. Starting May 3rd, we'll run an alternate schedule with 50% of our staff in on a daily basis. And they will work directly with students within the units. Also too, we'll be able to bring students into the library, Career Center, and our computer labs. Also too, on an every-other-day alternate schedule, we'll be able to bring the kids up to the gym now to come back to our normal five-day activity. Once the teachers are in the units, they have to wear the N95 masks and clean and disinfect once they do leave. So we've got a nice plan in place, everybody's ready to go. Virtually, we've been working every day. We have computers in the units, the teachers have laptops, and we communicate daily on our daily schedule. I'm online with the teachers every single day, making sure they have everything that they need. And it's worked pretty well for the most part. Like Brad said, we've had a couple of kids graduate. We had two kids in March graduate. And just as of this morning, we had another young lady got confirmed by OPS to graduate as well. So we've been working pretty hard on making sure kids are engaged. If you look at our grades, they are down a little bit just because we haven't been in the units working with the kids. So we're excited to be back starting May 3rd.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep, you're welcome.
Our LMHPs have been back full-time for at least three weeks now. And that was really something that we wanted to see happening. We've all heard, and it's very real, the concerns related to mental health as we're working through this. You know, it's much more than just a physical issue with people. And this pandemic, there's a lot of mental health issues that are related. And we've certainly been cognizant of that, and we wanted to do everything that we can to support our young people and to try to help them get through that. And so we're fortunate to have the LMHPs that we do. And we're really fortunate to have, coming May 2nd, I believe, Mark, Don? May 3rd, Donna Stewart, Dr. Donna Stewart's going to join us as a psychologist. And I think she just brings so much to the table. I'm really excited about where she may take this. I think she's going to really elevate what we're doing now. And it's going to be exciting to use her to try to improve our efforts and to probably do some things that we may have not done before. So that's exciting stuff. You heard Dr. Poor talk this morning about the people, young people in schools, getting vaccinated. I had some conversations with her this morning. For example, we have 28 of our 41 kids are 16 years or older and would be eligible for those vaccinations. So we're working, at Child and Youth Services, Commissioner Rogers mentioned that we reach out to Charles Drew to see if they may be able to assist with getting our kids vaccinated. And we're doing that, we just haven't got anything confirmed yet. So, but that would be fantastic. So we're hoping that we might be able to get somebody in to provide those vaccinations. They're working with our young people in the community anyway, so it seems like it would be kind of a natural transition for them to get the initial shot and then to stay with them for those that do leave, and then to make sure that they get the second shot as well. That is really all I had this morning. I didn't know if Kim has anything, or?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Brad.
Yep, thank you.
No other presentations for the Youth Center. We will open it up for questions, and first is Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I think I have a few for Dr. Carbaugh on the report presentation. It's good to see you.
Yes, you too, thank you.
This is the same report as you delivered in committee last week, is that correct?
That's correct.
So just a few questions regarding the 2019-2020 difference in population numbers. Are you able to determine how much of that is due to the impact of the COVID pandemic?
You know, I think if we are able to get some information from probation about their scoring and how they are making the assessment of whether to determine, because in 2019, we had the legislation pass. So I think that combined with COVID is what really produced that reduction. So I think if I can get some information to tease out what was probation, then the remainder of that should probably be just natural reduction, and then on top of that, the reduction from COVID.
Okay, you've probably heard the county attorney and his comments say that it was significant impact of COVID on the filing of cases because kids weren't in school.
Yeah.
Are you able to factor that in for us? Would you be able to?
I think if we have additional information, I can definitely look into that and see what we can get for you.
Okay, I mean, it's important to know because hopefully COVID's not going to be with us always. And so if we can determine what impact COVID had in terms of the number of kids, that would be a good thing, because we could plan forward in terms of that not being a case going forward. You have ZIP Code information on page three and page eight. And as you heard from our GIS director, that's not the greatest way to do it, but it is a way to do it.
It's a way.
Right. And we consistently get three ZIP Codes that come up, 681011, 68104, 68107. They have, I believe, a majority or nearly a majority of the kids in the Youth Center from those three ZIP Codes?
Yeah, it's running about 40% to 45% from those ZIP Codes.
Of the other dozen ZIP Codes in Douglas County, how many have zero children?
There's a decent number. If we're looking in terms of just this quarter, I know on an annual basis, we do have at least one youth from each ZIP Code. But that's another, if you'd like more detailed information, I can pull that for you.
Okay, it would be really good going forward if we actually had numbers on these ZIP Codes. So we could say, oh my gosh, this ZIP Code has, you know, 25% of the kids. ZIP Code X has 0% of the kids. And, you know, looking back, it's hard to understand how that can actually occur over time, but it seems to be occurring over time. So if you could maybe give us some information on that, that'd be great.
Sure.
On the average length of stay, again, the COVID impact, there doesn't seem to be a breakout here, but if you could find some way to factor that in, because again, like average daily population, COVID's had an impact on both of these.
Yeah.
And if we could determine what that is, it would be beneficial to us in our planning going forward. Regarding the demographics, we have a majority-minority population going back as far as I've seen. It would be good if, in addition to the bar graph that you have, if we could have information on that, like we have information on some of these other categories, where it gives us the actual number of children. So my calculations from this bar graph, it's difficult to say precisely that's 25%, or that's 24%, or it's 22%. So if you could give us those, because I'm adding up to, what's the majority-minority population of our Youth Center? And I'm coming up with a number based on your bar graph of about 80%. Do you have an exact number?
I don't, but it is right around 80%. So it's accurate that it is a vast majority youth of color population in the Youth Center.
Okay, this again is problematic because it's consistent and it's way out of whack with demographics for our community. So if you could give us precise numbers on that graph as well, like you do on some of these other graphs, that would be good. And I think you said in summation that you were going to break out the technical violations on the adult crimes like you do on the juvenile crimes charged.
Time, we'll wrap back around.
I'm just asking, is that right?
Time, thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Can I have a yes or no on that, please?
I can provide that.
Commissioner Friend, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Dr. Carbaugh, again, thanks for the report, very good. For about the last couple, three months or whatever, as you can imagine, the information, the meetings that we, that we're all involved in, the information that's coming in is coming in from a lot of different angles. I guess my question is this, when I go through some of these things and I'm trying to categorize and come, get to a point where I can get some clarity on particular issues, criminal justice issues, whatever the issue might be in front of us, since there's a lot of information out there that policymakers and even the public are going through, are there, and we're trying to disseminate trends related to, in this particular instance, DCYC, and possibly further down in different discussions, the county adult corrections populations. Can, would it be appropriate, under these circumstances, in a report like this, to incorporate a slide that would help us analyze or at least come to some conclusions as to why the numbers are specifically dropping? And what I mean by that is, it could be programmatic related. So in other words, in lieu of somebody actually being detained for a certain period of time, suddenly they're into a program, and this program has a success rate of X, right? Now again, this might not be the appropriate place, and I can talk offline with, you know, with my colleagues and you guys, staff. But I think that that's quite appropriate to help us try to weave our way through some of these success stories. I think it's a success story that those numbers are dropping. What I want to find out is, how does it match up with public safety issues, right? I mean, things actually happening out there where kids weren't being detained, they're in a program, and that particular youth is not necessarily causing a problem on the back end, right? So does that make sense?
No, it does. And actually, one of the things that I had started to put in here and then I took out was information on our home program, so Home on Electronic Monitoring. And I thought, if I have 15 to 20 minutes to do a presentation on both of these, then both agencies, or both of the programs are going to get a disservice. So I focused on the detention population here, but I agree. I do think the home program and focusing on some of those non-detention alternatives are important, and definitely something we can do for you guys.
Well, I think one of them, thank you, doctor, and one of them, a synopsis of the 24/7 program, for example. I mean, I know I can go out and get those, but there's just so much stuff out there. I was looking to try to funnel it, right, to a certain degree. Not that I'm lazy.
Efficient.
Don't comment on it. But anyway, yeah, thank you. And that's, that was my thought process at this point.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Abby, let me continue on some things that were there. There were mentioned, the average length of stay was mentioned as with COVID breakout. It's from everything I've been in and said in the conversation, it's safe to say the average length of stay hasn't had, it's not, can't be attributed to COVID so much in regards to some of this, because there's a few. But right now, where it is, it's a low number. There probably at one time that you could do that, but that may have seemed to work itself out the system because the alternatives have opened up. So it's fair to say the average length of stay goes to the law change that the board supported in regards to having all cases start in juvenile instead of having them file out and go to adult. Is that fair to say right now?
I think so. One of the things, if you look at the juvenile court population for 2020, it did increase by about two weeks, which is the quarantine period that we have for the youth coming in. So I think you can see that effect in the juvenile court population. And again, the decrease, or the increase for the adult population is, they'll probably have a similar effect, but it's based on the youth who were released during that time as well. So if they're being detained on more serious charges, if there are fewer community-based alternatives or programs that they can be released to, then the people, or the youth who we have detained are probably the youth who are there for more serious reasons.
So I just ask, I say that to point out that, just like Abby mentioned, two law changes that happened. It took them a while to make their way through the system, people to get adjusted. But that is one that I believe if that is supported and everybody starts in juvenile, there is no risk to public safety, it feeds the process up in regards to kids sitting there and waiting to go back. But that takes me to the question posed about COVID and school attendance. Is it safe to say that you can't really attribute COVID to school attendance? Because school attendance would fall into status offenses, which, as you noted, the law change eliminated that a while back. So a lot of the issues that are going on with attendance aren't really COVID issues because status offenders weren't going to be able to sit there anyway.
That's correct.
Okay. The other piece is to note that, I know I've been in some meetings and Kim can give me a head nod or not on this. And I think we should give them credit for it because, you know, there's some differences that happen to some degree. But my understanding too is that a lot of the arrest numbers and admittance, I mean, I've heard the chief of probation give credit to actually OPD for changes that they made in some degree, is that fair? Okay, yes. So just to note that on the record, the deputy county administrator over juvenile justice is nodding their head. A lot of the admittance decreases have to, the credit goes to OPD and some of the changes they made. And I mention that because, you know, we're at one point in the system and we kind of collide with a lot of those. But it speaks to their overall progress and just the conversation with some other groups. So at least like to publicly like to commend OPD for that change that they made in that respect. I think also, the other point I wanted to make is, being that, you know, different people contribute to different points in the system, like OPD and the reduction, I want to point out to people that the smaller our numbers get, the more complex the kids... the kids in the facility. And I think it is safe to say, and that's a correlation hopefully you can tie together, but the fact is, the, the, that brown population that we have in there in such high numbers,
One minute.
you have to attribute to underlying issues that we're trying to find solutions for. And one of them, the call I got, the number today is forty-one. At one point, we were at thirty-nine. You take out the three or so kids that outside our jurisdiction, we're in very good shape. But I, I do want to commend the staff and the work that's been along the line for the Behavioral Health Initiative, because in the conversation with one of the judges, they attribute that to the speeding of the process and where we're there. So I just say that to everybody, that that's evidence of the, the program phase and how that's coming in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Maureen Boyle, and then Commissioner Mike Boyle.
This may be a question, actually, for Mr. Alexander, but really, are there, is there a difference in the services for kids in the juvenile system versus those charged as adults?
Yes. The, the, the programs that, that we're focusing on have to deal with the kids in, in juvenile court. The kids that are in adult court will, they're waiting a, a verdict. And then if they're found guilty, then they're going to be going off to the juvenile penitentiary out by the airport. Not guilty, they go home, and then, of course, some go onto probation. But the programs that, that are being discussed here is, has to deal with those kids that are in juvenile court.
Just the juvenile court kids. Okay, great. Thanks. That's all.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Thank you. First, I want to say to the director that I appreciate the reports that I used to get on, from, I think it was Gray. I probably got his name wrong, but he's a, a black man who prepared really great graphs on who was being charged and all that. I'd like to see those again. They're very useful. I do want to say to Mr. Kavanaugh, I, I know that, I share your alarm over the number of, of blacks and Latinos that are in the system. But the reason that, that happens, if you look back to at least my childhood, the reason was that I wasn't caught doing things. These kids are, live in an area where they're heavily controlled by the police. They're on foot a lot of time. They get stopped. If you go out to the suburbs, that just doesn't happen. It's not the kind of, kind of police presence. And the other thing that's really at the heart of all of this is poverty. Like I've said so many times, when these, when the grandparents of these children came home from Second World War, there's a picture in the Douglas County courthouse with tons of people lining up to get mortgages. There is one black person in the line of about a hundred. They were redlined. They were not allowed to buy homes. They were not allowed to get mortgages. They were kept in an area, almost fenced in, really. And I used to write casualty insurance, and I was surprised when I found out there's something called redlining. Well, it means you can't write insurance in that kind of an area, but I did it anyway. So, you know, when my dad started working, I lived at 55th and L., but I remember, he, I was born in California, because they left during the depression to find work. My dad walked from 55th and L. to 24th and L. to take a bus downtown to make ice cream for seventy-five cents an hour. Now, that was in 1947. Times have changed, thank God, but there was, there is a lot of poverty, and it's still going on. And it is really brutal today, really brutal, because they can see the good things in life, but they can't have them. And we need to hook on to President Biden. He's talking about doing some things with poverty, doing remarkable things with it, trying to pull people out of it. We need to get involved with affordable housing. We need to get involved with all these programs. And, you know, I, I just really think we need to step it up and become very involved with the national administration. We finally have a president who cares about people. So let's, let's get him on board with us. And some friends here in Omaha, I know that he, they know him very well. We need to open up some doors and get some programs in here that will help people. So I'm, I'm really concerned about it. And I'm, I'm still a skeptic, I'm sorry to say. You know, I look at, at the numbers, you know, so we're down to forty-three kids or something. What happened? Is there less crime? You know, last year, we had, that first year, I guess it was in, I'm not sure what year. I didn't make good notes on page eleven. Went from five hundred and one kids in the facility to ninety-two. Why? Is there less crime? I don't know. I guess you'd have to prove it to me. I really doubt it. Let me just say this. I think, what I feel like is that our house is on fire, and we're trying to paint it. Give it up. Let's get the programs in here that are solid, help families get on good footing, help them get employment, help them get a life, help them survive what's going on in this economy, try to help them on a personal basis. And that's what we need to do, because getting money in their pockets, that's worked out, that they work legitimately get, and the things will change automatically. They will. And we need to get involved in some of these things. And I'm sorry not to ask any questions. I've got a lot, but I just decided to pontificate instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Any other questions or Commissioner Rogers? This is your second time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To answer you, Commissioner Boyle, it, it's not an issue of less crime. I can't veri- verify that, even though if you talk to some other sources, they may say it. I mean, you, you saw stats where certain crimes are up this year. It's not a crime, it's process. And that's what we've been saying all along. It's a better process. It's having a more robust data set and able to point to some things. It's, you know, having more resources of what you're saying, the resources you're trying, we're trying to bring to the table for the services to the family. So it's process, resource, and other statute changes that have made that. So I, I understand the point that you're making, and that is a valid point in a bigger scale. But as it's talking to this in the report, there, there are places you can report to. So you don't have to drink the water. That's fine. You know, there's, there's other people that may be thirsty. But there's a clear point that you can point to, process and other changes, where we've come to the result that we are. Thank you.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Well, I appreciate your comments, but, you know, it's not a question of not drinking the water. These kids don't have any water. So the, the whole deal is, you can change the laws, so that what they have done before is not a crime anymore, or they're being sent to a different court, and it looks like, I don't want to say it, but it looks like smoke and mirrors. The numbers are there. We have kids that are committing crimes, much more with guns and so forth. You know, there is a lot of trouble out there, and we can, we can go ahead and continue to try to paint the house, but it is on flame. It is about ready to blow. We need to face the real problems, poverty and getting people to work, getting them job training, treating them like human beings, treating them with respect, bringing them into our communities, giving them the opportunities that we've had. That's what we have to do. Today, I was saddened to hear that we finally, the governor finally appointed the first black woman, a district court judge. Now, how the hell long have we had courts in Douglas County? Eighteen sixty? We should be ashamed of ourselves.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? I will, did you want to say something, Mark? Come to the microphone, please.
Marco Flora, Douglas County Youth Center. Just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. Education is for everyone that's at the youth center, and that's a program that's regardless of adult court or juvenile court. And, and one piece that kind of happened with us going through COVID-19 is actually having parent virtual visits. That, that's a piece that, that really has taken off, and we're gonna look to find a way to continue doing that. And lastly, Greg did bring a snapshot of where we are for a day in April. Yes, sir?
Are you done, Mark?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for that. And following up on something that Mr. Alexander pointed out, relative to incorporating vaccines with our educational effort, and we heard from Dr. Poor that, you know, we're going into OPS, we're going into the private schools in our community. So I, I'm glad that there's an effort going forward to get our, our kids in the youth center vaccinated as well. And, you know, as soon as possible, I guess, but kudos on that.
Thank you. We, we really have a tremendous partnership with Charles Drew. And through that Behavior, Behavioral Health Initiative, it's, it's really kicked us forward quite, quite a bit.
Yeah, I think, you know, we have a special responsibility to children under our care to make sure that they're kept as healthy as possible, and this is one thing that we, that we can do. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I do want to, I know, I love Mike Seanlow, I really do, but I don't agree with them on zip code maps. I really like the zip code maps.
Well, I will keep producing them for you.
And then, just about three things. This would be for Ms. Havakati. When was the law changed, I think it was just a couple of years ago, where we could no longer house thirteen and under in our youth center?
Kim Havakati, Deputy County Administrator, that came along with that 2019 law also.
Okay.
So that was all part of the same legislation passed at that time period, which changed the reasons for detention. It's no longer a danger to themselves or others or property. It now has to be more specific, and also the age.
Could you turn the clock on, please? And so do we know if anybody's keeping track, probably through either law enforcement or county attorney's office, of the thirteen-year-old and younger being picked up for unlawfulness?
They would not be booked through detention, through the county attorney's office and through Omaha Police Department. We would be able to tell how many youth that age got tickets and were released, or how many were sent to diversion or to the county attorney's office for review for filing.
Yeah.
So there would be data on that. It would just have to come from sources outside of the county, per se.
Right. That question was just asked of me, and I didn't know if, how or what we were doing about it. So if, if maybe at some point, we can take a look at that, that would be helpful. And then, just a couple of things in terms of, on the positive side. You know, COVID has been horrendous, and I do give staff kudos for what they've done at the youth center, both staff-wise and taking care of our, our youth there. But on, there's also a positive side that we never shut down. We just figured out how to do things different. And sometimes that different ends up being better than what we did before. And that leads to what a lot of this conversation is in systemic changes. It's not just one entity doing something. It's everybody collectively kind of looking at it to see how, one, we could do things better. So even though COVID has been horrible and horrendous in so many aspects of our work, we've figured out and we're able to continue to provide high-quality services outside and inside of our facility when it came to our youth. So I just wanted, wanted, wanted to make that statement. But I also wanted to just thank Abby for the report. It was very good. So, thank you.
Commissioner, I think one of the key things we learned from COVID this past year, especially with our juvenile population in juvenile court, is that there are ways to operate outside of physically having to bring the youth to court. Our juvenile court system, credit to them, that since last April, they have been running all of the court hearings. It's been by Zoom. DCYC has accommodated those hearings for the youth. So have the attorneys. So those cases have kept moving at a very steady pace, and we didn't see, like we did in district court, and again, I'm not blaming district court, but when those courts weren't operating, our youth in detention sat longer. Juvenile court took a very different, and could because of the type of cases it is, the ability to do that and keep our juvenile cases moving. So that's a, that's a kudos to our juvenile court system.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you all for being here today. The next committee is Human Resources. The Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as Presented. And then as term, in terms of legislation, there's, you have the report in your packet, but I think it's worth pointing out a couple of things for last week's session. There was LB-17, which changes the fees for and provide for transfers to Nebraska Retirement Fund for the judges. Coulterman, Senator Coulterman actually amended the filing fees increases to civil case only. But it still has an impact on Douglas County, and these are the things that I want to keep watch on. Because again, after the horrid debate that went on about counties and cities and schools, my, my point to a lot of them was, let's take a look at what you're, again, mandating that's unfunded down to the counties, or shifting down to the counties, and this would certainly be one, regardless of it just being civil cases, limiting our costs. It's still a cost to us. The other note is LB-2, Senator Breezy had to change the valuation of ag land and horticultural land for certain school district taxes. That did advance after proposed amendments were defeated. So currently, ag land is valued at seventy-five percent for all property taxes, but under LB-2, ag land would be valued at fifty percent for educational bonds. We also had LB-408, Senator Breezy adopting the Property Tax Request Act, and that was debated the entire legislative day due to a filibuster. And that would have limited the future budget flexibility for us in all the other local jurisdictions. But the culture vote, cloture vote failed with twenty-nine yeses, eight nos, and eleven present not voting and one excused. And so, again, they'll continue to debate a lot of these taxing bills and revenue bills that could potentially affect us, and we'll keep watch on these as the week goes on. They are, and they are going later into the night. I think last night, they ended, it was either seven fifteen or eight. I can't remember. I lost track. But they are going into the night hours now. So again, interesting debate that's going on. And our lobbyist and Marcos are doing a great job watching and keeping us informed. So we'll report back next week as well on that. Any other issues or questions about legislative issues from board members? All right, seeing none. Anything from the public on legislation? Larry?
Thank you again. I'm hungry, too, so I'll keep this short.
You have to buy me a taco salad after this, then.
Michael like that. Anyway, the basic first principles of our country is the right to petition their government. You folks are all familiar with resolutions. Well, there's resolutions down at the State House also. Resolution is not necessary a law. But the right to petition government's been denied once again down at the state of Nebraska. And I'd like to see this board be involved with LR-14 resurrecting. If you read your Constitution, Article Five, and all of you should, and all of you should understand it. That's your oath. It gives the federal government the ability to amend the Constitution. It gives a state government, the state legislatures, quote, the right to petition also, to propose amendments, only to propose. So who has the right to deny a citizen's position for Article Five Convention of States to only propose? First principle right there, no one has that right. Supreme Court might think they do, but they don't. So I expect this body to support the Constitution, Article Five Convention of States for proposing. Now, if it's good for the goose, it might be good for the ganser, too. You have a right to propose constitutional amendments to the state constitution of Nebraska, and you really should. If you read the copy that is printed down at the State House, they'll give you one. My God, it needs to be rewritten. And they're down there proposing all kinds of constitutional amendments, but they're not asking the citizens until it gets put on a vote, maybe. So you could get involved and say, hey, clean up your act, stop spending unnecessary money. You don't, you don't directly amend the state constitution. You don't, you don't directly amend the state constitution of Nebraska. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. We do not have a need for executive session today, but I would like to remind everyone again about our mental health listening session Thursday, April 29th at 6:00 p.m., and then following our county board meeting. We do have a community service committee, and Commissioner Maureen Boyle, I'd asked, did you want to start at 12:30 so people could grab their lunch? Would that be okay? We'll start in room 903 at 12:30. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn? There was a motion by Commissioner Maureen Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Voting yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Voting yes.
And Commissioner Rogers?
Karen, maybe send us a Zoom meeting if you can.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Mike Boyle and Morgan voting virtually, all their commissioners voting in person.
Thank you, everybody.